Our workshop preparation for the October 30 meeting. Um, we've wanted to meet early so we could go over ARPA stuff. We have some guests here, so I asked that we uh. Readjust the agenda and take care of business first, you know, the week or. On our, our stuff, that's what we need to do.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, let's have roll call, please.
Mr. Panchal Masa.
Here.
Sir Malloy.
Here.
Miss Frenchau.
Okay, um, first order of business, um, received the correspondence from Veteran Services. In regards to our leaving, we accepted his resignation at the last meeting as of the 25th, I believe, on our. Uh, agenda last week, and there is some question about, um, email that I read about keeping on a laptop and. Sick day payout. I just wanted to take it.
Yeah, yeah, does Bill Danzo coming or not?
I, I texted him asking to be down here.
Okay, so yeah, you guys received the communication.
Yeah, name first, I'm sorry.
Herbruehr Veteran Services, um, so you guys received communication from our office about my separation. Not sure where you got the October 25th date, that's incorrect. Um, so we believe that we have a remedy to the sick leave, um, that we will, uh. The board will execute its statutory authority to take care of that remedy. Um, so we'll work with, uh, the auditor's office to make sure of that. Um, as far as the Attorney General's or the, the prosecutor's opinion, prosecutor's opinion is flawed. The last time this board tried to usurp the authority, the Veteran Service Commission was in 2013. Uh, when they, at that time, said that we didn't have the permission to go out and see the principal space. We did, and in order to correct their mistake, this, this board of county commissioners then built a $2 million bill. So I would hate for us to face litigation, so again, we're going to propose a remedy to the solution, so. We'll let the board, our board use their statutory authority. Um, the next thing is, uh, while I am on leave, I still need the use of my email. There is no legal authority of the auditor's office to shut off my email, which she did yesterday. So I would ask that that be restored. And you guys will get noticed when, when my, my last date is.
As of right now, I'm like. But just out of curiosity, I see you have some of the, um. Commissioners with you here today.
Yeah.
Um, do you have money in your budget to cover any of that sick and vacation group? That was already budgeted to you? That, that, that's an important thing to know. Um, because at the end of the day, we don't administer that, those dollars, it's already budgeted. So.
Yeah, so again, as long as I could get my email back, because I did have correspondence out to.
I don't have a problem with that. I don't have a problem with that. But when's the, when's the, when's your last day?
Well, that, I'm going to work closely with Kerry to kind of figure out when the last day will be. That's part of the remedy to my sick leave.
And, and that's part of the thing, when we got the agenda last week to accept the resignation, it was effective October 25th is the way it was written up. So we accepted it last week, we journalized it.
Yeah.
That's why.
And when we were discussing a sick leave, it required you guys to approve it, and you guys canceled your meeting last week.
Right. We did have a meeting, yeah, we did have a meeting, canceled last week. Didn't have a meeting.
So as long as I, I know that my email will be turned back on, that would be great.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with that, until you're, whatever the, the, the date is that you're not going to be employed by Trumbull County.
Um, excuse me, Martha Yoder from County Auditors, actually, the email was disabled because. His last day was the 25th, that's a typical way for us to handle it. In speaking with Kerry yesterday, um, we offered, um, some solutions for what we saw was the issue, which was he wanted to share. Things off of the, um, laptop with her files, and we offered, uh, some remedies for that and some suggestions. And the way that we left it was that he was coming today. Um, we, I, at that time, when I spoke with Kerry, said specifically, yes, we know that we. Um, don't have the authority to make you do it this way. And we would have actually turned it back on, but her response was that he was coming in today to deal with it. And actually, my, he was bringing the laptop today. That was my interpretation, that they, they saw it our way. And so, at that point, we would have absolutely turned it back on, but it was turned off because his last day was the 25th. And we will turn.
Herbruehr Veteran Services.
Understandable.
Herbruehr Veteran Services, um, so again, none of the conversation that I had with the auditor. Um, it took, and also, the, uh, the prosecutor's opinion that she requested, that she didn't actually include me on. Which was specifically about me, so I have a major problem with the auditor executing a study that she does not have. So only the Veteran Service Commission will tell them when, when the last day of an individual is. We have a board, we have a, we have a board, we have a board member who was left here in July, was his email on? Was his email on? Tim, can you answer that?
I, it.
We weren't informed that he left in July.
Yeah.
So his email was still on as of last week?
Were we actually informed that this, this individual left?
What, well, I, obviously, the auditor controls payroll, you'd know that this individual didn't get paid, right?
Did, was, was the Information Technology Department notified?
The Auditor's Department was, are you, are you.
Your, your department is responsible for notifying when people are.
And your, and the Auditor's Department was notified when he left.
You're responsible for.
Is the IT under the Auditor's Department?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
I think we've said everything we need to. Well, I'm, I'm waiting for Danzo to come down, because we do have correspondence from him that, that. Our policy and procedures supersedes independent boards' policy and procedures.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I'll, I'll wait for him.
That, that's not what he said, that, that's incorrect.
Yeah.
Fisher, oh, oh, wait, the actual correspondence, the correspondence is not that our policy and procedure supersedes theirs. Their board does have the right to create their own policies and procedures. Any entity under Trumbull County that has a board has the authority to do that, however. What Bill Danzo is saying is that per ORC, not Human Resources, not Martha Yoder, please try to remain calm. Because we are trying to work through this together effectively, efficiently, and make sure that we give you the right answers, and understandably so, because. We also don't want to take on any liability as the county, you have to understand that as well. We understand that you have the authority, I totally understand that, hear me say that, we're not fighting that, we're not fighting anything. What we're telling you is that Attorney Danzo gave us an opinion that say, yes, you can alter your policy to supersede ours. However, because it is more than one half paid out by general fund, that the Board of Commissioners needed to then approve that. That is why we're here right now, that's all we're saying. So technically, to say that they don't need to approve this would be incorrect, because Attorney Danzo is saying they do need to approve this. And we do all need to comprehend and understand one thing and one thing only. You're asking us to do something, that is something that we have never done for any other county employee.
Actually, in his opinion though, Alex, he did notice that it does say a political subdivision does have the authority. Veteran Service Commission.
I said that.
Is holding, we're, political subdivisions can do it without the authority of the board of county commissioners.
But that's not what he said, I'm just, listen.
That's what 124.39 says.
And he's quoting C Section 1, I, I'm, it's very clear what he's quoting. I am not the attorney here, so to put me in the middle, I think is extremely unfair, to put the board in the middle, I think is extremely unfair, to be quite honest with you. Um, I'm just going to be a straight shooter and tell you that we're conflicted right now, we need to get to the bottom of it from an attorney. Um, I'm going to say that as professionally as I can, I think everybody needs to remain calm. We're not trying to hurt anybody, we're just trying to make sure that Trumbull County is safe and all of it, you need to understand that as.
Sure, and, and it was brought to my attention that there was the potential for litigation from past employees, but if you read his opinion. It says that this cannot be retroactive, so how could there be litigation?
Well, your opinion says it, your policy says it can't be retroactive.
No, 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 his letter, Bill Danzo's letter, said it cannot be retroactive.
Okay, and your policy change says retroactive, ours does not in our policy.
Change didn't say.
Yes, it does, I have it right here, it says.
Says retroactive.
Yes.
Says cannot be retroactive, right? So that was according to what Bill Danzo's letters. So what I'm, but, but what I'm saying, Alex, is, how could it be that there could be the possibility of litigation? If it clearly says in his letter that it can't be retroactive, how could somebody come back and sue if it can't be retroactive?
Again, also, I'm going to tell you is, I, I know that you want me to answer those questions, but I'm not.
I understand, which is why I'm saying, and I've pretty much done here, there's nothing more for me to get covered with, yeah.
Until Attorney Danzo satisfies whatever the board of commissioners means, I, I'm bowing out gracefully, because it really has nothing to do with, with me. To be quite honest with you, I'm just trying to.
I, I will, I will say that, that the Veteran Service Commission has broad authority, much more authority than, than, um. Other statutory boards, I know that, I know that for a fact. And the argument could be made, can be made, that it is a political subdivision, it can be made.
Sure.
So, that's why Danzo is so critical in this, uh, and he needs to come down here and give the board some clarity.
I don't disagree with that statement.
Sure, and hopefully, uh, Auditor Yoder went down to go get them, so hopefully, we can hash this out rather quickly.
My, my concern is just make sure we follow whatever it is, we don't put ourselves in jeopardy of.
Yep.
Of that scenario of, um, people who've separated and didn't get it, and were told they couldn't get it.
And, and just for the record, um, while we're here, did the, did the Veteran Service Commission vote, when, when they, they changed their policy? Was it, uh, a unanimous vote?
We need to also, we did accept resignation effective October 25th.
So we'd have to change, we'd have to change that.
And then re, you, um, modify the motion that we had last week, because we journal entry.
Right.
That, that was effective on that date. And that was per your guys' memo to us on what's good.
So we were just acting, and we didn't know that the change was coming, just, right, and it just so happened that we didn't have a meeting that week.
The breach happened on Thursday at our regular working.
Okay, so wait, when did you get the communication that I resigned?
Last week? Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago.
Yeah, when we had it on the, oh, it was on, um. Accepted it effective October 25th, two weeks ago, which was presented.
You accepted it on the 16th.
Correct. Effective October 25th.
Okay, Bill Danzo was out in the building, uh. How, I think at this time, what, what would be probably pretty good is, um. What was the date that the Veteran Service Commission gave as your last day?
November 1st.
November 1st, which would be this Friday. Can, can the commission extend that a week so that we can, so that we can talk to Bill Danzo about this and potentially.
Get extended as long as we want.
Well, I guess, I, we don't need to do it that long, but there is some discrepancy here, and I know Herm has talked to his association. Um, uh, in contact with Bob Marino too, about, you know, that there's some legal precedent that you might be able to bring to light. To Bill Danzo in the process, we don't want to make the wrong decision, we certainly don't want to cause. Any harm to the county or you, uh, and, and overstep either way. So I think that it would be prudent at least to, to give it, I, I haven't talked to Bill Danzo about this.
What, what exactly are we talking here, how many hours are we talking, what is, uh, what is the amount of crew?
What was his approval, I don't know. Okay, going for you, that's, so. That's sick and vacation or just this?
Vacation's okay.
So vacation is allowed. The vacation isn't the question, just the work here.
Okay, very good.
I want to make sure you have all the. There, there's no issue about, the ORC is very clear, it's just sick time. Um, but again, I'm not saying you guys are wrong, I'm just saying. The board needs to hear from their legal heads.
Let, let me ask you this, would your association be willing to come and meet with the commissioners over the course of the next week?
Yeah.
I think that would be necessary, somebody from your association would be legal, preferably legal, that would come and speak to the commissioners and maybe enlighten us a little bit, and Bill Danzo.
That's a possibility, very Columbus, so I think, I thought.
Okay. I think, Commissioner, I think that might be.
I, I don't know, I don't, don't know any other recourse we have here, I mean, we got to get guidance from.
The prosecutor, right, and I have, I have not talked to him about this, I found out about this yesterday.
Yeah, I, I did call and talk to him yesterday, and his, he said his. Email to us was pretty clear in the, but it was a little gray, I read it too, it was clear, but it was gray.
And if, and if you can make the art, if, you know, if they can make the argument that they are a political subdivision, that it wouldn't be classified under other commissions. And, th- this is, this is a unique scenario here, because you have a board that's appointed, that's a paid board, administrative board. Of, of veterans officers, with a very broad authority, as I mentioned before. Um, they're under their millage that they can ask for, for, um, so they have the money to do this. So we might be overstepping our boundaries and saying, you can't do this to another political subdivision, if that's what they're categorized that. And I don't know that. I'm just being completely transparent.
We've never had to litigate with the, the.
And I hope we don't.
Yeah.
Mr. Marino. We, the way that the structure of the commission was set up, it's a judge.
Your name, your name for the record, I'm sorry.
Bob Marino.
Little louder, I know you can be loud.
We, the way it was set up, I think. When the, when the politicians down in, uh, Columbus set it up, and they put the millage and everything together.
Yes.
They wanted to keep the politics out of, and that's why they got a judge to appoint us.
True.
And they made it in such a way that we run it as far as pay raises, vacations, whatever. The only time we have to, we have to come to you is when we give our budget, because that's checking balances, you have to have that.
That's right.
The other thing, the only time we have to come to the commissioners is if the commissioners, us, the veterans commissioners. Want to raise, it's illegal for us to give us a raise, that's why we have to come to you. But everything else, and I might be wrong, but everything else is on, on our authority.
There has to be some balance, they can't go and say, we want to pay a bonus of $100,000 as he leaves or anything like that.
That's why, that's why we have a budget. Actually, Herbruehr Veteran Services, actually, that's incorrect. The, the authority is under 590103, letter A and letter B. Uh, which says employing such staff as are necessary to carry out the commission's duty and fixing their compensation. There's no footnotes in the code that say notwithstanding or except for, there are no footnotes.
And I will say this, the board has always, the Veteran Service Commissioners have always asked for reasonable amounts, never taken the full millage. I will say that, we've got a good working relationship, we built a beautiful flagship facility on High Street there. And, uh, we, we want to see that continued for sure.
Yeah.
I don't want to do anything adverse to you, Ed. So, but we need some legal clarity on.
Bob Marino.
Yes.
I think, I think. The veterans themselves wouldn't want the Veterans Commission to be a political entity. They want us to be separate. And, and I think.
Yeah, we don't even appoint you guys.
No, you don't, the, the judge appoints us, but I think, I think that, that what's going on now is like a power struggle, in my opinion. And, but we have the authority to do it, but. I, uh.
Well, I, I think at the end of the day, um. It would be irresponsible for us to act without legal, clearly, because I have some legal questions I'd like to ask. Um, because there's some gray areas when it comes to commissions and boards and then political subdivisions in that section of the code. And I really haven't gotten that answered by Bill, I just found out about this yesterday, so, um, you know, that's where I stand.
We, we have an issue right now with the ARPA's board too, which is also appointed by a judge, which could set precedent.
Sure.
What happens with that with this other issue that went last week?
Potentially, yes. I, I will say that this board is a little different, uh, of the way it's constructed, I mean, as far as, yes, they're both appointed by judges. These veteran service officers are paid, these commission officers are paid.
Um, there'd be no parks without veterans.
I think, I think we're good here, alright?
Thank, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. I appreciate you guys taking the time, and if you can extend that. You know, obviously, you, you guys are going to have to call a meeting to extend that, because.
Yeah, we have a meeting.
Okay, very good.
Very good.
Now let you know what Bill did.
Okay, thanks.
We meet this Thursday.
I don't think so, we'll discuss everything. Wish, uh, Bill Danzo could have been here today, but.
I don't imagine expecting to start.
I know.
Danzo just texted me to be here in 10 minutes. That was 10 minutes ago.
Good.
Would you, would you grab them?
Yeah, I want you to wrap it up, let's get this done now if we can.
Right, those right here are talking.
They're gross.
Those are how they're talking. So I just want to make sure, you know, that's where it's at here, just so that.
I know.
You know. You guys do as you see fit, but.
But they're, but they're saying they are their own.
Political subdivision, yeah.
Hey, I'm just, my big concern is, is still taxpayer dollars are used.
Oh, yeah.
They can't come and tell us how to use all the taxpayer dollars, they don't have autonomous power over a budget of the whole county.
I just want to make sure about this, again, not Alex's directive, not Auditor Yoder's directive, this is from Attorney Danzo. We defer to our, we get it, not trying to fight with veterans, the last thing I think anybody wants to do here, but.
Say, it's not that, we just go to watch the precedent we set with the other departments, we're only charging $13,000 bucks, but still. $30,000 bucks can go a long way, I'll, I can house five veterans for a month in a hotel. You know, that's, still real money. He's talking my mouth.
Yeah.
Lisa, are they going to bring it inside so we can finish this thing now?
I like them.
Yeah, what?
Stay away.
Still aren't there?
Yeah, exactly, I just. Since I'd rather bring them in now, see if we can figure this out publicly, if you thought we can't, we'd have to set another meeting to do it. And we, um. Got to get your opinion on this in reference to the letter that you sent, we need some guidance on this, on what we. Um, what publicly you can say or not say.
Well, I mean, I guess it's up to the commissioner for what I publicly say from a legal opinion perspective. Um, you know, that's.
We would, so, so one of the discrepancies or one of the issues that I had with the opinion was, you know, they're making, they're trying to make the argument that. Um, that they are a political subdivision, they are standalone political subdivision. Uh, not that falls under the commission and boards and all those other things that we, um, is that something that's viable? Do they need an opinion from their organization, or their local, their organization to come talk to you about that, or is that?
Well, here's what I would say, I, I mean, I've done an opinion on this, and I, it sounds like some of the folks at the Veteran Service Commission have a disagreement with my opinion. And, you know, that's fine, I'm always open to extra input if somebody thinks that there's extra legal authority that, that changes what I've done. Uh, I'd be glad to look at it, that being said, it's been a little bit of an awkward situation, because I haven't heard from the Board of Commissioners anymore on it. I haven't heard from the Veteran Service Commission.
I found out about it yesterday.
I have, uh, you know, I, I've heard from, you know, one person, I have a lot of respect for her, but at the same time, I have to be kind of careful that I'm not. Giving an opinion to one employee. And not the boards, you know, because I haven't really heard what their desire is, so, um. You know, if it, what I, what I've said before is, if I, if somebody wants to put something additional in writing to me, whether it's the Veteran Service Commission. Saying, hey, here's what I think I'd like you to look at, I'd be glad to look at it, there's been. Saying, hey, here's what I think I'd like you to look at. I'd be glad to look at it. There's been some talk of there being legislative changes. I know there has been over the years. Uh, but traditionally, though, the Veteran Service Commission does have some autonomy. Uh, they've been treated more like a, a county board. You know, we have the Board of DV, we have the, the, uh, you know. Children's Services Board, but they are, they are in some ways county boards. So that's what, that's what we have to sort of figure out because. In the old days of statutory interpretation. The Attorney General, the courts used to say, if you have the power to set your salaries for your employees, you have sort of broad power to set every benefit for them. Then there was, that they dialed that back because the statute that we're talking specifically about with, uh. The payout of sick leave, that statute was eventually then viewed sometime in the nineties as. Well, this is a special statute that actually kind of takes precedence over the general salary statutes. And so if you receive more than half of our funding, that's where it triggers the commissioner's approval requirement of the, uh. Of any modification to the sick leave payout statutory scheme. Uh, now again, you know, if, if there's an argument that the, uh. You know, that the statute has been amended to kind of take them out of that and, and give them back more autonomy. I, I'd be glad to look at it. I, I've got no problem trying to, to figure out what my opinion is, but here's what I would say. If, if I've got the Veteran Service Commission who is a statutory client as a county board, and I've got the Board of Commissioners who's a statutory client as a county board. Um, uh, you know, I, I guess I can, I can give an opinion as long as there's no. Dispute between you guys, but if there comes down to be a dispute, then we've got an issue. And then I have the conflict and I'm gonna have to have everybody get their own lawyers. So, um. You know, I, I guess what I'd have to see is do both boards want me to do additional research and an opinion on this jointly? If so, I'm glad to do it. Uh, but i- if it's gonna be, you know, one board that wants it. And, and wants to potentially try to use it against the other board, then I, I'm a little uncomfortable with proceeding that way. Without really trying to dig through to see, you know, where we're at.
Well, I, I think in the case of finding out exactly the truth of the matter or a legal precedent. Um, I'd be for looking at it a little further because I think they make a compelling argument. I really do. Because when you look at it, I understand that, you know, that it, it would be setting a, a difficult precedent. But they have an autonomous board that has broad authority that I think as Mr. Moreno pointed out. It wasn't meant to sort of fall under the, these, the auspices of the, of the Board of County Commissioners in a lot of ways. Um, even though they do get general fund though. Um, so I, I, I think it would be prudent to at least look into it.
Question, question for Bill Hermroer, Veteran Service Commissioners. So Bill, when you talk about statutory authority, uh, concerning salaries. Are you, you're, you're looking at three, two, five under the code?
I'm just talking generally because there's, there's a lot of statutes that, I think that's the one for you guys, but there's.
No, actually, that's, so that's the, that's the ironic part. Under three, two, five, it lists almost every county. Uh, personnel that you would find with the exception of Veteran Service Commissioners. So Veteran Service Commission salaries are only dot defined in fifty nine oh one oh three A.
Okay, and tha- and that's fine, but there's a lot of other boards that are that way too, that have their own statutes governing their own.
So shouldn't the statute then have a footnote or an asterisk that says notwithstanding or except for? Does fifty nine oh one oh three contains no language like that?
No, tha- tha- that's, that's not the way it would work generally. What it would be is again, there's whole, there's rules of statutory construction that you get into with that and. What they say is, for example, one of them is special statutes prevail over the general. So if the general statute is you can set the salary. A special statute that says you, that this is how you govern a specific part of the salary. Would generally prevail over the general, you can set the salary statute. And that's where some of these AG opinions have come to the conclusion that. Despite these authorities to set salaries and things like that. The, this one, this, uh, the section that we're talking about with, uh, sick leave one twenty four thirty nine or whatever it is. Uh, see, that, that is the special statute that sort of overrides the others. Now again, I, I, I'm not. Saying that you're absolutely wrong as I sit here today. I'm like, so I'd be glad to look at it. But, um, again, the, the one thing I know that you pointed out, your disagreement with the current application. But there was that one opinion where this was specifically asked of the Attorney General in the context of a Veteran Service Commission. And it, the Attorney General said, you know, basically the context of it, that, that pro- this process does apply. Now again, i- if your, if your belief is that the statutory amendment has superseded that, I can tell you, it's not. Recognized as an official overruled opinion in the Attorney General's overrule opinion index. But that, that doesn't mean that the statute hasn't superseded it in some way. I can, I can look at that.
The statutory change that happened after that AG opinion was the one that took away the authority of the county commissioners over the Veteran Service Commissions. So that's, that's essentially gonna take away all of their statutory authority.
Well, I'm, I'm not entirely sure. I, I can look into it, but I'm not.
I believe that the board may have some statutory authority to handle this in another way. Where we don't have to face litigation. So I'm hopeful that, that we can remedy that way. Uh, but that'll be up to our board to make that determination. So, I think we're good.
Yeah, so at the end of the day, I'd like a, a little bit more clarity on it. If you can, Herm, if your organization, I know you spoke into your organization. If they can get with Danzo, of course, in the weekend, um, you know, we can, we can sort of find some clarity on the issue. I think that's the best thing we can do.
Yeah, as long as my emails are stored, I think we're good. I think what I was, what I would ask for from you guys, that if I could get something in writing from both boards. Saying that you would both like that additional clarification. And then based on that, if, if one of the boards disagrees with it, you know, you know, I, I would never tell anybody you don't have the right to challenge it. Certainly. You know, there's the right to challenge anything legally and, you know, we could go from there. Hopefully we can avoid it, but if not. Um, I think once, once I do this follow-up review, if that's what you guys want. Uh, that probably would be the last thing that I would be able to do.
But, but you gotta understand, Bill, they came to us with this, you know, if it were normally just an opinion from you and sure, we would just move. You know, they're, they're coming to us saying, you know, what, you're not looking at this.
Sure. And again, I'm willing to, I'm willing to take a look. I've got no problem and see if there's something that changes my opinion. I, I've got no problem doing that. I'm always willing to do that.
And, and I just want to say for the record, Herm has been a fantastic director. Uh, worked with him over the course of my ten years. He's gonna be sorely missed. Uh, he was president of this association, uh, the National Association for God's sake. So. Uh, we, we certainly appreciate this. This is nothing to do with anything with that, you know, you. Brought that Veteran Service Commission to new heights and we certainly appreciate that.
Thanks, thanks, appreciate it. Alright, thank you.
We'll be there Thursday, so. The door is open Thursday, we'll be meeting at the commission Thursday morning, so ten o'clock. More resolve this problem then.
Well, we'll see if I can get my opinion done by then.
From the state too.
Okay, tha- that's fine, yeah.
So, reach out to CCAO and.
Yeah.
And some of the other counties to see if they've ever.
I mean, it's a unique situation. That's the problem, that, you know. I, I think that. There's not another situation like this. There's the Parks Board, yes, it's sort of like this, but, but they don't. But they don't have a certain millage that they take and they, you know, that they have to get. Um, tours and board, but you know, we, we don't really fund them at all.
Uh, your bed tax dollars.
Bed tax dollars, but no general fund. Um, but, you know, uh, so I, I think it's just unique and I'd like to have the clarity. I think that's the best way to do it.
Okay, um. If you're, I could, one other.
Yes.
Order of business before you get.
We can do that, yes sir.
Ed Stark, Trumbull County Board of Developmental Disabilities, thank you for your time this morning. Um, it's not on your agenda, but I wanted to bring it to your attention. I have three board members, speaking of board appointments. Uh, who are, uh, termed, uh, whose term of appointment will end December thirty first of this year. Two of the three are eligible for reappointment. Which is Mr. Larry Larson and Mr. Moore, D V S T. They were, are interested and are eligible to be reappointed. They would like to be reappointed if their commission. Uh, agrees. Um, Mr. Riley, however, is term limited. He has served the maximum amount of time he's ill. Eligible to serve on our board. Um, and with the new rule that, uh, came. Uh, came effective July first, twenty twenty five, uh, fifty one twenty six oh two seven. The appointing authority being the Board of County Commissioners, um, so. Appoint at least one individual with a developmental disability. Uh, we do have a person that I'm recommending, uh, for your consideration. Uh, Ms. Melissa Baker, she's been involved with our program for a long time. Um, great advocate for herself and for other people with developmental disabilities. Uh, she would make a, a good board member. Uh, as the first person appointed with a developmental disability to our. Um, the appointments need to occur by statute before the end of November, so there's nothing that is pressing. We have some time to consider, um, but I would like your consideration.
Did we open this up, Republic to what?
Uh, you, you can, um, and, um, Melissa would certainly apply. She's interested in doing that.
I, I think we need to do that. I mean, we need to have a deadline when applications can come in, some beautiful applications.
We need to do a press release for, regarding the, uh, uh, appointment, the availability and interest.
That's all I'd say. Do that and give a deadline, then any applicants that come in besides these, I'd like to see the applications for them also.
Sure, absolutely.
Though even the people that want to reapply need, need to reapply, you know, through an application.
Sure.
I agree.
Anybody else have anything? Will we sing our teeth in the?
I just want, Martha, you're a trouble counting on here. I just want to clarify one thing. Um, with regard to my, um, it was my staff asking for the opinion. We do that when someone asks for a payout that we're unsure of. Actually, anything in my office that I'm unsure of legally, I will ask for an opinion. And I just verified with, uh, Mr. Danzo that I, what I did was appropriate. Um, he's done that in the past. It's been past practice with the office before I was there. My payroll employee came to me and asked me before she reached out, I said, it's completely appropriate. It, and, and because it's an opinion from the prosecutor. I don't have to loop another appointing authority.
I agree, I agree with that.
So I wanted to make sure that the board understood and is.
No, no different than us asking for an opinion about an employee. We don't have to, you know, typically they're not included in.
Once I got that opinion, I waived privilege in order to.
Right, I agree. I thought that was a little off, off color with them.
Maybe didn't know how that worked, I guess, uh, I'd say.
And I, I would, I'm sorry, I'm Steve Johnson Bush, because I got looked into this last week as well, obviously. I want to be very clear in stating the reason the commissioners had nothing to do with this is because the Veteran Service Commission asked for their own. Opinion on the matter about how to change their policy. So this was all going on behind the scenes. So I need to be very clear on that. This is because people didn't, I'm gonna be quite frank, communicate. We all, all, again, I stress this every single week in our meetings. All the players were not at the table. It was people going out, getting their own opinions. Landed in HR's lap saying, hey, this looks contrary to your Trumbull County policy and procedures, Daniel, which it was. However, we're not saying it's not allowable. We're just saying now, because there's that extra layer. I need to make sure that I do my due diligence as well and make sure that the commissioners are abreast of whatever may come of this. Your decision at the end of the day. But we need to be very clear, when people do tend to act in silos. This is what's gonna continue to happen. Things will happen behind the scenes and we all have to get together and hash it out. I hate to say it that way. But you also have to be communicative. Not saying us, I do feel like everybody here was very communicative in this. I feel like what they were, you know, the Veteran Service Commission, I think you hear them loud and clear. They feel like they want to act with their own subsidiary. And that's what's being debated right now. That's it. If, if, if that's the truth and they can do what they want, so be it. Right? I mean, then it won't have any impact on us in the future, because they're their own. But we need to have that in writing, that they're their own. If they're their own, okay. But if not, I sure as heck don't want to face all the county employees. Who quit, were terminated, resigned, whatever reason, and were not paid out hundreds of dollars a six time.
Agreed.
Sorry.
It's kind of a weird thing too, because.
I, I don't want to be that person.
We did, we did accept his resignation when they saw. That this wasn't happening. They put him on paid leave at like fifty-four bucks an hour, forty hours a week. Right now, you're getting paid that salary, which, and they can pay their salary like they said what they want, but still sounds to me like. We shouldn't do that. We're trying to help veterans. We're trying to spend the money the best way possible. I mean, taxpayer dollars are still taxpayer dollars. So we need to rectify this quickly as to be not in the situation where. We're spending all this money, but zero of it going to help any veteran at all. So that, that's something that. That's why I want to see this thing up, real quickly, so they can spend that money in better ways.
Agreed.
Okay. Alright, anybody else? Okay, well, let's, uh, let's start out with our, this is what we wanted to talk about and, uh, we'll get to the agenda. After that, but the reason we met early is for this ARPA reason, so.
And, but Commissioner, I'm sorry, we do have some ARPA on our agenda too, did we not?
Yeah, I'll mention those as I go through. Let me get myself logged in here. Um, and I'll give you guys. I know you have, but I see they printed out what I sent you out, so I'll give it. And I'll start with my notes that I have at the beginning of the packet and go over, um. The first sheet that you have, um, and this is. And the first sheet that you have, I also have it up there. Um, this is what we've termed our yes sheet. Um, and I'll start with eligible, ineligible and updates from that. Um, pending with Attorney Rogers, I'll start with, um. Uh, Julie Green, uh, submitted a modified community family outreach request for forty one nine nine one. That is still sitting on her desk, and if you look on the sheet, that is what's in. Below that, unhighlighted, is the Mecca request that Julie Green is working with trustee Clemson on. And will forward to Attorney Rogers as soon as it's ready. We have three eligible requests which are on the agenda this week. Um, so they'll eat, there's two pieces on each one, uh, the resolution and then the resolution for the agreement. Uh, the first one is Howland Township, which is actually Bolandale Food Bank, Bank, uh, of course, it's C two seven fifty. Scope Centers, which used to be, uh, Family and Community Services and now Access. Uh, so you, when you see the resolution, it will have that. That's eighteen thousand dollars and that's for automatic defibrillators. And then Bristol Township, um, a hundred and seventy-five thousand for an ambulance. So all three of those are actually on the agenda this week.
Correct.
We also have, in, in blue on that sheet, all, um. Uh, there are three requests on there where, where we had frozen money, which is, uh, we're doing the, uh. Road improvements, similar to what we've done with Vernon Township. Uh, so those three are in process. Um, they are being pursued as county revenue loss done through agreements with the county engineer. Here's the current status on each. Bazetta, the next step is approval of the agenda item on this week's agenda, allowing the prosecutor to review the agreement. Farmington, um, Attorney Rogers has the scope of the project and is working on the agreement. Mesbo, I haven't heard from Gary this morning, so I don't know exactly where they're at, but I know that they were meeting last night. And he would have the scope, uh, the trustees were meeting, and he would have the scope very soon and then send to Attorney Rogers. Now, I want to note that with Vernon, uh, with Vernon, we had to do. At, an agenda item for concurrent representation with Attorney Rogers. Farmington, Mesbo, I'm sorry, Bazetta, Farmington, Mesbo, we don't need that because Attorney Rogers does not represent them in any way. However, with Farmington, once the agreement is done, and then with Mesbo, once Attorney Rogers has the agreement done. The next step after that will be, um, that agenda item allowing the prosecutor to review the agreement. He'll, uh, Attorney Toth will send a letter to the commissioners and those will have to get on the agenda. As quickly as possible and approved so that Attorney Toth can then review the agreements. And so we'll be moving those and I'm trying to make sure that I watch my email traffic and direct it as much as I can so that we get this done fast. Because we only have till December thirty first and we only have a certain number of meetings left. Um, number two on there is still Roger, still wagon product, project changes. Um, the resolution for the changes that we talked about, uh, about adding the eighty-five thousand and taking the residual funds. There's a resolution for those changes as well as the MOU that, that, uh, works that out on. There's a resolution for those changes, as well as the MOU that works that out on the agenda this week. And you also receive a copy of the MOU with that resolution. The changes that we've made with pulling residual from other projects. And adding the eighty-five thousand are reflected on your spent and reserve sheet, which is the one behind the yes sheet. Also, on that spent and reserve sheet, Julie and I have identified county projects. That. Will probably need an MOU. And those on your sheet are in blue. We've, the completed and approved MOUs are in pink, and I just want to note, the still wagon is still in blue on the sheet, because it has not yet been approved. Once it's approved, I'll change it to pink. Completed county projects are in green. I want to note that the Vernon Road bid on that project came up under, as you had noted. Commissioner, a few weeks ago, when we approved that, that came up under what we had reserved. In speaking with Gary Schaefer, what we decided to do, he was comfortable with. Taking the bid amount, adding twenty-five thousand to it to cover change orders and contingencies, just to make sure that everything gets covered. And then we reduced that to that amount on your sheet, which is. So instead of four oh eight. It's on one of the later pages in there. Oh, it's the last page, instead of four oh eight, it's three forty-nine and change. So we've reduced that by almost six. So, moving on to the maybe sheet, you were emailed the current maybe sheet and. Links to the request on that sheet, I also gave you a copy of that, so that as we move through it, we can talk about each thing. I have, Julie, I think, is on the line, she was unable to be here today. But as we review the requests, we thought that perhaps she would be a better help to you. In what is doable and what might be eligible, because she has more experience in this than I do. Thank you, oh, you sound horrible, Julie. The, sorry. Just shocked me, the parrot tone shocked me. I also have Christie here to help, she's gonna keep track of what we, what you approve as far as the amounts. So that I know that when we did this last October, you kind of expected me to be able to do that. And I was not really able to do that while I was trying to keep track of everything, so I need an extra person here for that. Just one more thing before you start, or a couple more things before you start. I have the current bottom line sheet on your, the notes that I gave you. And our magic number of what we have available right now is eight hundred fifty-two thousand, one hundred sixty-eight dollars and sixteen hundred cents. So that's what we'll be subtracting from as you move these on. I set up the maybe sheet. I want to go through it and just show you the way that it's organized to help you out. Obviously, you can choose to go through these in any way that you want, but I tried to anticipate what I thought would be a logical way. The very first part of the sheet, which is in blue, are requests that you have not yet reviewed. So, these were not reviewed last October, they are newer requests, most of them. And they are things that never got moved, some things, as they came in, got moved to the yes, because people came in and talked. But none of these were moved, they came in after, most of them came in after the deadline. And they are all ones that you have not reviewed, the way that I put them in order was least amount to greatest. Because I thought that would be a logical way to review them. The next section after that are three sheriff's office requests that came in. They are, I put them separately, because they are county projects rather than awards. I kind of anticipate that you are not going to consider them, however, because they came in, I felt it was best to include them. So I did that in separate, in separate places. There were two other sheriff's office requests, but that have since been fulfilled through sales, sales tax, through justice. Then the the next section in yellow, these are all requests that you looked at. And you put on the maybe list. The very two last requests in green are ones that were paused at legal. So these are the Colbert Lake Dam request, or Colbert Lake Dam Study request. And the USS Oklahoma, rest in peace, these were paused by you in workshops. Through consensus, when they weren't responsive to Attorney Rogers' request for more information. Another, just one more thing I want to note is. If someone has more than one request on this list, I put that as a note in the review. So that you could see that it's the second to the last column at the top in the review notes, so I've noted that. The final column at the top is if they have received another award, how much they have gotten. So you can look at that as you make your decisions. The only other thing, I would say, one of the problems that we had last year when we did this. Is we would have a lot of discussion. And sometimes it wasn't always clear which way you wanted to go. And I would have to go back within the meeting, as I took notes. And sometimes even Attorney Rogers and I, when we review things after. She would have maybe, I would have yes, I had to go back to the video. And so if we can make sure as we go through each one, and doesn't mean you can't set one aside for now, within the meeting. But as we go through though, I want a clear view of what you want on each request. So with that, I will let Commissioner Malloy proceed, and we will.
And I'd like to start at the back, if we could. And starting with the USS Oklahoma. I want to retract that one. The building's gone, haven't heard from them, they haven't done it, and also like to do for Colbert Lake Dam Study. We've waited months and months, it's something that there are other community support in that. We've got nothing from the landowner showing that there's anything involved in the county. This would be, at this point, it's. I'd like to retract the support of that.
I agree, I agree.
Would that put money back in, or is that money for?
No, we didn't freeze it, when you moved it, when you moved, Martha, you're a Trumbull County auditor. Commissioner, when you moved it to the maybe list, it took it out of the money that we were, that I was considering as reserve.
I agree, okay.
I also have a question.
Sure.
The Weatherfield, so I'm just making sure, Weatherfield Township multi-jurisdictional reports, that's been, that's not accounted for either? Like that's.
Correct, because it was put on the maybe, anything, nothing, nothing on this list. Has been, has been subtracted from the available funds.
Okay.
So anything that you decide from this list will be.
I know we have some individuals here, Commissioner, different communities have taken some time out of their day to.
Let's let that, if anybody wants to speak in behalf of.
Yes, your name for the record, and then if you can approach a few.
Rachel Nader, I'm the advocacy director for community legal aid. We submitted finally application in accordance with the commissioner's policies. Prior to the deadline last year, September fifteen, twenty twenty-three, I believe.
And and I will just interject, I apologize for that, it was one that got missed. On those, somehow it got missed and was not put into the pending, and I found it in the county thing later after they had the meeting. So anything that we received that I was made aware of after the meeting, I considered, I will take the blame for that, so you're.
We sincerely appreciate the apology, thank you. Moving forward though, and I know that many people aren't really sure of what community legal aid does. I'm willing to speak forever on it, but I will tell you that when we did submit the application, it was for a two-year period. Clearly, we're not going to have that amount of time to perform services. I have the authority to amend our ask to two hundred thousand, originally it was four hundred thousand. So at this time, I'd like to amend the ask to two hundred.
Commissioners, so commissioners, if you look on the, it's one of the blue ones on the first page, if you haven't found it. And it would be the fourth one of two hundred thousand, of course, that moves it a little differently on the thing, but. Just if you want, I'm ready on the sheet, and I won't.
So Rachel, this goes directly into service to.
Absolutely, the demand for our services has only increased. Trumbull, as you know, are facing an incredible housing crisis. We're facing a consumer debt crisis, and when I say that, legal aid only represents those not according to me. The poorest of the poor, my clients are generally older, they're generally facing bankruptcy, why? Not because of poor choices, but because they couldn't pay for their insulin or their disability bills. We represent people who have suffered incredible domestic violence. And because of that, they're without any relatives, so they're facing homelessness, they're facing the inability to be self-sufficient. What kind of cases does Rachel Nader see? I'm representing impoverished mothers who are being sued by the person who raped their children. For damages to try to get them to prevent from testifying against the rapist. We get the people that nobody else can help. Most of my clients are older, they have faced catastrophic losses during the pandemic, that they've never recovered from. Whenever we have any type of business that closes, whether it's a hospital or an automotive plant. Catastrophe follows, so we will, as much as we can to help these families attain dignity, respect, self-sufficiency. Try to put them back on their feet, so they can have qualitative lives going forward. Unfortunately, even with our federal and state funding, we only reach a fraction of those people who need our help. Trumbull County is a very vulnerable county. If you don't know, we are first or second in the rate of evictions, all right? Many of those evictions today are because we have no affordable housing stock. I have disabled people who get rent increases of four to five hundred dollars, you know, within a month, and their whole income is a thousand dollars. So we try to keep them in their homes, we try to do what we can to protect them as much as possible. I can go on and on about the services we provide, I'd rather feel questions from the commissioners relating to the services and what we do.
Martha, you're a Trumbull County auditor, I want to interject two things from Julie, who's listening. First of all, she did, she wanted the commissioners to know that community legal aid would qualify under Title One for sure. She believes it would be ineligible. Second, she says for you to talk about your work in two thousand.
Um, it's, it's, it's. We are blessed to have a wonderful court system, we are blessed to have a wonderful treasurer's office. And because of the work they did, we had a foreclosure crisis in two thousand eight across the nation. That saw many people losing their homes because of what was called the subprime lending scam. In Ohio alone, we had thousands of people facing foreclosure. Because of the collaborative effort, and I'm not going to take all the credit, because we had wonderful judges at the court. Judge Logan, who's retiring, and the rest of the bench were tired of seeing banks come in. And foreclose on properties, leave them abandoned, and let the county to pay for those abandoned homes. So the courts, and together with the treasurer's office, and I can't say enough about Mr. Lamancusa and the team that he had. That really wanted to keep people in their homes as well, together we fought to save homes. There's eighty-eight counties in Ohio, because of those efforts, ten percent of the homes. I should say seventeen percent of the homes were saved in Trumbull County alone, to keep people housed. Which, when you do the math, is incredible. And I will say that, you know, Julie's giving credit to community legal aid, but it really was a team effort. And unfortunately, all these programs that offered assistance before the pandemic and after, that's dried up. I can't find mortgage assistance, the Save Dream program is no longer operative. There are no rental assistance programs now that are helping people who suffered during the pandemic. I mean, I have people who got sick, that have long COVID, that can't get back to work. It's just. The demand for our services has just exponentially risen. I say no to so many people who desperately need help to stay in their homes, to move forward. Especially like with bankruptcies and consumer debt, I don't know if most people know, but there's twenty-two ways to lose your license. Many people lose their license because of bad driving, or because they didn't have auto insurance. No, you can lose your license for being poor. If you can't afford to pay for costs, you lose your license, once you lose your license, you lose your job. And then how do you pay for anything? So, again, I am at your leisure, please feel free to ask questions, but I can speak for House.
Rachel, it's, obviously, the commissioners recognize that this is one of the most worthy causes out there. I'm in favor of moving this forward, if not for the full amount, at least an amount. And that could be a hundred thousand, because I know we have others to get to, but I understand that. What legal aid does, and for the most vulnerable population out there. I think it'd be irresponsible for us not to do something, as far as assisting and doing our part, because we know people that have been. Devastated by the pandemic and what's, and everything that's come from that, rising costs and all those different things, so. We understand that now more than ever, people need legal representation, and it's very, very expensive, and a lot of people don't have the means to get it, so. So I'd be in favor of moving this all.
I'd like to hear everybody first, and then. Let's see what we have left before we make commitments.
Okay.
I appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Chris Peterson, Village of Lordstown Board of Public Affairs, I know we came in a couple months ago and spoke. He made an application for infrastructure stations, moving our water system. And I believe the ask was around four hundred thousand.
Four twenty-four.
Yeah, four hundred and four, and last night at our board meeting, we did, said whatever county could help us with. It's part of a bigger project, we're running a new twenty-four inch line to the village for water supply. We're having trouble keeping water supply in the village with all the industry and everything. So, any, any assistance would help. I know our application was a little late, there was a miscommunication on our end, so we do apologize. Thank you, David, yeah. Mike Sullivan, Village of Lordstown Public Affairs.
This substation would touch every resident of Lordstown. And not only the residents, you know, that were probably one of the biggest employers in the county. To be able to. Get the water to them that they need, this is a viable. You know, Foxconn, we got one on the board now wanting to come in, that we can't. Tell them that we can give them the amount of water they want. Actually, we got eleven million dollars worth of the twenty-four inch line that Chris talked about, that there's a. Of the original amount that we talked about, one point eight. So we're, we're really dying as far as trying to get the funding. We got on the twenty-four inch line, we got four million from federal. We still got the fourteen million dollars. Uh, but we still got the fourteen million dollar project. Like Chris said, uh, first, I think we talked about the one point eight and. So that wasn't feasible, and then we went to the four twenty. Uh, like last night, whatever help you can give us, we would really appreciate it.
Martha, you're a Trumbull County Auditor, just a question, because I have two requests on this list from Lordstown Village. One is the four twenty-four, and the other one is over two million, two million ninety thousand.
Forget the two million dollar.
That's, that's, because that had been the priority one initially when you requested, so.
Just a quick question. I know that obviously everyone knows that the majority of the industry is gravitated towards Lordstown. That's very important, like the infrastructure necessary out there. Will the improvements accommodate further growth as well?
Correct, they will.
So that we're taking into account, because obviously a lot of these spin-off companies are gonna have, hopeful, we hope they're looking at Lordstown. Because of the rail and highway access and everything, we all, we need infrastructure.
Yeah, one right now, what did they say when they would grab up five million gallons a day?
The request is.
The request for.
Five million gallons.
Five million.
And right now you can't even fulfill that request.
Right, correct, that's the improvement we're working on or trying to get us.
We're approximately a million gallons a day short today.
For L A C and T E C.
Semi slurs with Village of Lordstown, please, for the Board of Affairs. Um, fifteen, our, our, our community on average reduced three hundred million gallons or three hundred thousand gallons of water a day. From two thousand fifteen till today, they're at four point nine million gallons a day. I don't care how we plan, or if you say we failed to plan, we did not. You plan and you build, and as that happens, our growth has happened. It, it, at more than that, we went from not just industrial users, but mega water users. Um, and that being said, yes, this infrastructure, the, we're moving a booster pump station, um, uh. Uh, and relocating it to have an interconnection to aid in, in future growth as well. But the pump station itself is in the low pressure area. The residents that are there today have low water pressure. So it is a need, current need, it, it's been a need, but you take your list of priorities. And you sift them down, and those little things always end up at the bottom of the pile. This little project is now one of our top concerns to, to get it implemented, to get the water there and the supply that's needed. Um, like I said, over less than nine years, went from three hundred thousand gallons to four point nine. We're, we're, we're not reactive, we're trying to be very proactive, but the growth is there. We have a request for future, you know, capacity five million gallons a day. That's just one request. I, that was, that came through our superintendent, I have a request for almost three extra million gallons a month. Today, we're a million gallons short of what our customers want. Fortunately, we have two sources of water, so we're able to, you know, shift, shift that around a little bit, but it is a current need.
Cause you guys apply for my, and or and City Warren.
That is correct.
Water.
And with one, um, T E C, um, begins to take water next year.
Yeah.
Their, their initial request is up to six million gallons a day. So, you know, the City of Warren hasn't started the construction of that water line. So our current system will next year, as they're testing and trying to, um, develop and, uh. Put into the grid, you know, the production water, construction water, we need the extra water supply, we need people to supply that water. And that's because, you know, that's the area that is short water now.
Another one is Foxconn, they're saying that, uh, by mid twenty-five, they'll be up and running. And they would be using the same amount of water that G M used, which is about nine hundred thousand. Which is right in that area too. And right now, they have six hundred employees. If they get to where they say they're gonna do, be six thousand.
Martha, you're a Trumbull County Auditor, um, commissioners, uh, just getting a little waiting in from, uh, Julie on this. Um, she did, I, it sounds like you have applied for other funding, that was one of her questions on that. And, um, she's not sure if the beneficiaries under these projects would need to be L M I, or not, that's her question. But she does feel like it would be bene, uh, eligible based on what she's hearing. She did also extra Gary wait. And I heard him kind of.
Oh, yeah.
All right, you say you have a customer on the line here for five million gallons per day, one customer?
We have a request right now.
All right. Has anybody done the projections of that revenue you're gonna get from that five million gallons per day to see if the project will pay for itself?
We haven't gone that far. In fact, we don't even know the name of it.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, okay, then that was my question, because I've had projects like my state road water regionalization project. You know, after I ran the numbers and increased revenue we're gonna get as a result of that project, it's actually gonna be more than enough to pay for the project, it pays for itself. And I guess you're not in that position yet, though.
Pretty, pretty much everything we have is going in that second term, or what we have to get more water supply.
Okay.
Well, how, how do, how does L M I enter into this as far as maybe C D B G money?
Uh, I, 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 that would be, that's in Julie.
Julie, are you there?
My screen popper saved her voice.
Oh, okay.
But that's fine.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, so I, I, I think that the water and sewer and broadband are automatically expressly enumerated, approved eligible activities. But I wasn't sure if they also needed to demonstrate that they serve a low and moderate income community. That's, it was just a question we'll have to do a little bit more research on, but it, I'm pretty sure that anything that's related to water, sewer and broadband are automatically approved.
Sure. But I was just wondering if there were funding sources out there as well, but if they qual- qualify for low and moderate income, like C D B G monies or? That, that would need, uh, obviously some work on your part to look into.
Right, if they decided to, to request funding, like R P I G funding, um, the county would be able to apply on their behalf. Uh, we're currently working on one with Gary's office, and so. The, um, I, I know Lordstown doesn't have any low-income census tracts right now, but we could always do a. Um, income survey, but I'm guessing that this project benefits a much larger area, so you're talking. And what, what, the, the project beneficiary area would probably cover like three or four townships. And so that would be a difficult one to qualify for C D B G funds, plus it's limited to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, yeah, just checking, I was, you know. Thank you, Julie.
Sure.
Get some tea. Sounds terrible, yeah.
Very, thank you. Any others?
Mike Haddell from Vianna Township again. I know our ambulance situation's on there, um.
I have, I have a quick question. How, how was, just looking at this, um, how, how is that ambulance so much more than the other?
Well, why, why don't you explain it to me, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I, well, well, we had some systems put into the ambulance.
Okay.
For, um, we, there's a heart monitoring system in there.
But I mean, it's almost.
So.
I know, a hundred thousand dollar one.
Commissioner, just, uh, maybe I can help a little bit, actually, because I was there last night. So what has happened is, you know, is we're all aware, Martha, you're a Trumbull County Auditor. Uh, we're all aware of the situation within Vianna.
Sure.
They have an ambulance that they're having to turn back into.
Okay.
That is the cost of it. Um, in speaking with trustee Haddell last night, um, after the commission meeting. Um, because it, that was part of what they talked about at the commission meeting, was it being turned in? Um, he indicated that, um, he could maybe do a different request for the, for an ambulance at a lower amount. That cost is what it would cost, cost them to keep that ambulance.
Yeah.
They're not gonna be able to do that. It's, it's a deadline, two o'clock today. There's no way we're gonna be able to.
I, I spoke with, I spoke with Terry Fund.
Okay.
This morning before I got here.
Oh.
And if, if there's something, Terry Fund is from Fund Superior Ambulance, so out of Pennsylvania, they're a supplier for it. If something could go forward, and I'm not saying it can, and we can keep that, then, um, he's not gonna pick it up. You know, and if he knows that, hey, thing's gonna happen. So he has a potential buyer for it, but if we move forward with keeping this one, then he's okay, he'll, he'll stop, you know, basically repossession. But if, if the two eighty-six is too high, I know the cost is up there, and I asked. Why, I can't find the spec for when it was purchased a couple of years ago. But I talked to Terry, there are some systems that they've put in there for health reasons. There's a heart monitor system, it's like twenty-one thousand dollars. Um, there's a lift assist system in there for, um, a special cot that, you know, keeps first responders from. You know, lifting, that's a little bit of money. So there are some extra systems that they put in there that. What ended up happening is these systems are purchased after the fact and then applied. We just did it all. And put some things in there. So that drove the cost up, is my understanding of it. So if that's not possible, it's feasible, or at recommendation of Trumbull County Commissioners. We'll rescind that or modify our request for a lower amount, let this one go back and then start from square one.
And, and I do want to point out, just because of the time factor, we have to be honest here on. Then, then, uh, Martha, you're a Trumbull County Auditor. Attorney Rogers does need some information that may be more difficult. Given the situation for them to have. Um, the run numbers are not a problem. Revenue, um, costs, they may not be able to drill down. Unfortunately, also their, uh, current fiscal officer has also resigned. And, and of the month, end of, sorry, end of November.
Our revenues from the ambulants have gone up, but we don't have accurate numbers for this year. We don't have anybody in the fire department manning it, they're not.
Just wanted to give full disclosure there. I did encourage them to come today, because I think that you needed to hear from them. And, uh, that explanation at least.
Yeah.
Of what it was, because when I saw it, I didn't completely get the explanation, now I do, after.
This, this cost, I mean, there, there's things in there, um.
But you, so the, the township would be well doing, except, you know, a hundred seventy-five or, you know, modified amount.
If we went through a modified amount, what would end up happening is I would have to lose that ambulance and then start the purchase process of.
But we've had a lot of different, you know, you know, I mean.
I, I understand that, so, and I, I'm okay, I'm okay either way.
Most of them right around, I'll be honest, like, I, this is off the top of my head, I, I haven't analyzed it.
Yeah.
But most of them have been around one seventy, one seventy-five.
Yeah.
To my.
And you are, it's a very difficult predicament, and I can appreciate that.
And, and if that's the situation, I'm okay either way. I mean, we're gonna need an ambulance. My concern is the cost of an ambulance down the road.
Yeah.
So this, this is on our books, and what will happen is our books will be reflected to two eighty-six in a while. That'll get us out of fiscal emergency quicker. Three years from now, we get out of fiscal emergency, now we need an ambulance, we start the process, it takes three years to get an ambulance, and the cost might be. So if I need to modify and do it now, then I can start this process, and then three years take delivery of a new ambulance.
Just to be clear, this is move those to, this is to move these to Fannie Martin.
Absolutely, that was one of my points, was pretty much everything that you decide today, I feel should just go to Attorney Rogers as quickly as possible. We have to make my petitions as soon as there's my petitions, even the request itself.
So I'm okay if I have to amend it, cut for a different amount, lose that ambulance, here's what it is. That was bad decision-making three, four years ago.
Mind you, this, you had no.
So that's our situation, and that can accept changes.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, that's it, um, I know we also, do we have anything from the township that we need more than?
It's on here.
I know, but they stay on a petition, they said they were.
Nothing, oh, you got it, all right.
Yeah, we got, uh, two hundred and three residents signed petition, uh, from Warren Township asking for their ambulance. And they also have a request here for one seventy-five for ambulance, and all three trustees signed on it, and they got two hundred and three residents signed asking us to consider. That's some record. I guess that's, uh, what I'd like to do first. I personally want to take care of the townships that didn't receive anything yet or are underserved. Um, and, and look, and right away, we know M A K is gonna be taken care of with Julie and Chris Hankwesson. Um, Lordstown has not gotten anything from us yet, so I would make the recommendation we give Lordstown two hundred thousand. Um. I, I would agree. And they could put towards their, uh, water booster, first water, water booster system. Absolutely. Because they haven't received nothing yet, and I think two hundred thousand, they were late, they need some of the stuff, but, um. I still think it's a worthy cause, and, and they're worthy of getting something, as we stated earlier, to take care of everybody. And I think that two hundred thousand numbers are a good, good number. And I will say that that's a lasting, uh, on economic development and on public health, so, so it should be prioritized. So I, I would say let's, let's move forward to Tonya for two hundred thousand. Agree, agree.
We're here at six fifty-two, one sixty-eight, fifty-nine.
Okay, um, the next one I would say is Warren Township, they did receive a little bit, whereas it's a big township with a lot of residents. They're asking for the ambulance, they got the petition here, they're asking for one seventy-five in addition to the sixty-seven they got. Which isn't out of line, some of the townships got, like Liberty got four hundred and some thousand, even Vernon got over three hundred and fifty. I'd like to move the ambulance forward to Warren Township. I agree. The one seventy-five. And then commissioner, do you have any on there to jump out at you there? I, I, I would say that, um. O- obviously, I, I stated about legal aid, community legal aid, I think that we need to, um, at least a hundred thousand on that. Yeah, I'd be, I'd be more comfortable with that at fifty thousand, just because we're looking at the other causes that are out there. Um, that are township-related, that are, what we've done with some of the other nonprofits. And like I'm looking at Warren Family Mission on here also. Yeah. I'm thinking maybe fifty thousand for Warren Family Mission, fifty thousand for them, fifty thousand for Best Purpose. Kind of set a precedent for the, the ones that are township-related, so they all get something. And I think if we went higher than that, I think we could take care of all of them, that's the small ones like that with something. Yeah. Um, rather than. I'm not opposed to that, that's, that's a good idea. Are you okay with that? Fifty for. I'd say fifty for Best Purpose.
Community legal aid was fifty?
Yeah, fifty for community legal aid.
And then Best Purpose, um, um, for, and that would be fifty.
And then Warren Family Mission, fifty thousand towards their, um, air conditioners.
Those three at fif- at fifty each.
Yes.
Okay.
Where's that? Oh, here it is.
And the other one that jumps out at me, surprisingly, Weathersfield has not gotten anything from us yet, except for the, the water thing that. They, they asked to take some of the requests. Yeah. They've got a request to us for the multi-jurisdictional training center. I'd like to, I'd like to make over two hundred thousand for Weathersfield. For the, for the training center? Yes. Is that still a go for them?
Um, I have not heard anything from them, other than I think the reduction that they would have, because we did the eighty-five thousand on still wagon.
And it said right here, put on maybe list, the test or lower amount.
The lower amount was what, that was what, I'm sorry, Martha, you're a Trumbull County Auditor, that was what you, as a board, had said last year. Put on the maybe list with potential to.
But I don't even know if they're proceeding that. I don't know if they're, if they've gotten funding necessarily to proceed that.
I mentioned, like, in my, my conversations with them, they said it's, what was their request? I mentioned, like, in my con- my conversations with them, they said it's, what was their request, or senior center, four hundred and some?
Well, four hundred forty-seven thousand educational center.
Yeah, they they said that they would like that request of the eighty-five thousand for still wagon water line. And then the remaining balance they were talking about sending against Crane Drive.
Yes, they were.
You know, Crane Drive, that was. To be determined also. Um, so I I don't know how, if they are just giving up on that uh service center or not, I don't.
Is anyone from Weathersfield on the line? Can we get a hold of Mr. Ruin? The only reason I'm asking here is that they got nothing yet from us, and then I don't wanna go on to other townships. Um. And leave them without.
While you're trying to get that answer. Sorry.
Um, our office did the environmental review for that project. They have other funding, I think they were looking for gap funding, but as Gary stated, Weathersfield Township's preference was to. Um, have the sanitary sewer projects funded instead of, you know, putting the ARPA towards the uh. Church Education and Training Center. Since the East Gate ranking meeting, I don't know if they have changed their stance on that or not. But um I can text you Dave Ruon's cell phone number if you want it. This is Julie Green, Trumbull County, sorry.
Oh, do you have his number? I I'm trying to get him right now.
Yeah, Morrow's texting him right now.
So uh Martha your Trumbull County Auditor, Julie, please pose the question that you posed in the text with regard to Warren Family Mission.
Sorry, Julie Green, can you hear me? I'm I'm having technical difficulties. For Warren Family Mission, uh.
Julie, hold on one one second here. David, uh, I got you on speakerphone here, we're in the middle of this uh discussion about. Um, the uh the multi-jurisdictional workforce center. And obviously Crane Drive and and all those working parts that have gone into this now, taking out eighty-five thousand and. Potentially, we were looking at taking the rest for Crane Drive. Uh, what's the status of everything right now? What's the township's pleasure on any of this stuff? And I'll try to keep it as high as I can on my speakerphone here.
Sure, so.
And you're in a public meeting, let me tell you, obviously, as you know.
Yes, absolutely, the Crane Drive sanitary sewers, well, to the residents out there that require to need that uh sanitary sewer. Unfortunately, uh, you know, the county was unsuccessful receiving those uh. The P D C funds, so I don't know what that's gonna say, but as a relation to the multi-jurisdictional center, we still intend on. You know, going a bit and uh hopefully proceeding with that, if we could get some money from accounting for that project right now, we're uh. We're short on money to be able to construct it. Um, some of the local money from the county so that we can proceed on that project.
What sort of funding, what's, so so with with that being said, obviously, the initial ask was four hundred thousand or four forty-seven. Uh, with the eight, with the, with the eighty-five backed out, uh, for for the water project and then. Um, what what are you short uh on that?
Yeah, I think we asked for the two forty-seven, um, we don't, David or.
Okay, I did not see that.
I didn't have that, and and.
Somehow that got missed, I'm sorry, so we're, we're updating that as we speed.
There's some emails and a couple of letters that that we modified our request in the interest of the county. Our jurist should have to use the minds, you know, throughout the county, so we lessened our ass. So we had asked for two hundred forty-seven thousand.
Ask them to still go forward, two hundred.
Yeah, ob- obviously with two hundred thousand, can you find the forty-seven thousand to to gap funding there to sort of make this a go? If commissioners were to um, were to assist.
Sure, sure, we're the trustees, if you know, the commissioners gave us two hundred thousand, um, probably uh. Sources for that, that forty-seven, bridge the gap with the eight hundred that we already have, and we get this project built, that would be fantastic.
Commissioners, um, this is Martha your Trump County Auditor, and with that two hundred thousand, if you both agree to that. That puts us at one twenty-seven, one sixty-eight, sixteen. The other question.
We don't need anything from Dave, or do you have?
I don't have any questions from him. I'll I'll, if I'm sure whatever the the renewed amount is, whatever we end up doing, we'll make sure I include that with. Uh, whatever I send over, so I'll I'll differ the amount, as long as we know what it is. To you. Um, the other question that got raised that with uh by Julie. Is about Warren Family Mission because their ask was uh quite a bit more. Would they still be able to do what um they want to do or need to do with just fifty thousand?
And that's the issue.
And I I texted uh Mr. Marari, but I.
All right, David, um, we're we're in this meeting, so if we have any other questions, we'll let you know, and you're welcome to tune in as well.
Right, we'd be most appreciative of you to want the two hundred, so thanks for your consideration.
Okay, thank you.
So our vote has been in agreement for the two hundred at this point.
Well, if they could find, if they could find enough for to to bridge the gap, two hundred. I mean, and that wouldn't leave us a hundred twenty-five, we could still do another ambulance, if we were to pare that down, but maybe one fifty, correct? I think the one, if they're able to find the funding.
If you could, if you pared it down to one fifty, you could um, you could do McDonald Villages. Um, or you, or you could do Vianna for that, or or whatever you have left. If you pair it down to one fifty, that puts you at one seventy-seven.
There were the. The Weathersfield ask, it sounds like they have funding in place, we would be helping that funding. But the township could absorb some of that cost, so if we pared our our.
So.
Contribution down to one fifty, we could do another ambulance from McDonald Village.
And that's, so.
Correct, yeah, and you wouldn't, Vianna would get. We won't be able to do Vianna, because we don't have Vianna. That's, you probably need to choose between Vianna and McDonald. McDonald, and I wanna remind you that McDonald did already get a hundred thousand.
Donald did get a hundred thousand, Vianna got twenty-seven thousand.
Right.
I didn't realize.
No, twenty-five, because they actually did not take the full amount, the quote, or the the invoice came in lower. But we paid, we, that twenty-five five.
All right, well, let's, let's start at the top of these ones and just eliminate, and then see if there's any others before we make our final decision.
So we don't have a final decision on either um, the, sorry, either the. The Weathersfield, um, or. An ambulance at this point, you're not sure, you don't have your final number, all right, go ahead.
I have Warren Amateur Radio Association, drives over six thousand bucks. It's a lot of work for six thousand, but should something happen? And the grid go down or something, we're gonna rely on people like amateur radio people. That's gonna be a communication, you see all the doomsday scenarios, um. They're looking for a field trailer and a repeater. I I don't know anything about that group, but it sounds to me like that kind of makes sense a little bit for six grand.
But the question is on that one, eligibility, and I have posed, I'm sorry, Martha your Trump County Auditor. Um, I have posed that to Julie to get her opinion, because she's actually, she has access to these requests as well, so she can look at them. Um, no opinion, she's not sure.
And let's let's put in another double maybe. My Lordstown Senior Center, that would be no at this time. West Wilmington Village, that would be no. Vianna Historical, that would be no, they they got their sixty. Let's run the village again, no. Uh, Fowler General Store, no. Best Purpose, we got a fifty, Warren Township one seventy-five, McDonald Village, double baby. Warren Family Mission, fifty, I have that. And I, and and even. Warren Family Mission, maybe totally clear here, they need funds, period. I mean, air conditioning is where they put the grant request in towards, we're gonna have to get it eventually somehow, some way, um.
And they may be able to even just, um, well, first of all, it's uh Martha your Trump County Auditor, um, it. Just from based on what we're seeing, it's HVAC, and that's one of those ones that does seem to get. Uh, um, approved or eligible, the other thing is they may be able to even just qualify for that amount in the revenue loss, like we've had some.
It's something I'm saying, but I mean, if we're, if we're even contemplating buying a. A hood for a stove for the other place, I mean, we gotta get family mission something. Um, buying an ambulance, that would be double baby. We need legal aid fifty, or some village two hundred, run for Warren's future. Two million, I mean, anyway, if we threw anything less than that, it'd be, it would make it that.
And and I will, I will urge us, though, that in the future, maybe we need to partner with some different funds like that.
We do, but I mean, that is something for the future, but I don't think that's our.
No, not yet, yeah, yeah.
Um, Lordstown Village Sheriff's Office, no. Hillside Rehab, no. Uh, Family Community Service, someplace safe, no, they got one eighteen already. Right? Although worthy cause, um.
But they're eligible for a lot of state, federal funding.
Uh, Engineer, Gustavus already got one eighty-seven, Engineer, Weathersfield, two hundred potentially. Or one fifty. Uh, Engineer, McDonald Water Tower, McDonald's already got a hundred. Uh, Warren News Town Urban League and Inspiring Mines, those are two very big asks, I don't know if there are anything.
I know.
In the neighborhood, right, doesn't even make it that much. So with that being said, that brings us back to, we got one twenty-seven.
That's one twenty-seven is if you do one fifty on Weathers. No, I'm sorry, if you do two hundred on Weathersfield, if you do one fifty on Weathersfield, it's one sevens.
Which would, which would allow us to do an ambulance.
Correct, and just on the Warren, on the Warren Amateur Radio, so I'm sorry, Martha your Trump County Auditor. Under the Warren Amateur Radio, um, she's saying may qualify under natural disasters. But she feels her application would need to be rewritten, which she.
Well, who would?
I I would say let's do the Warren Amateur Radio for six grand. And then do an ambulance for one seventy. And if money does come back in.
Or how about this, we, the one seventy, you divide between McDonald and Vianna, and they can, they can.
Seventy-five apiece.
Seventy-five apiece, that that way we're contributing to both, because they're both.
I have no problem with that.
I'm not, I, he left, um, Martha your Trump County Auditor, I am not sure. That seventy-five is gonna help Vianna, because I don't think that they could. Their financial position right now, they're not in a position to contribute. They're just not, I'm I'm, I I'm just being honest on this, um. Just because I I have, I'm privy to what's been happening, so I, they actually, and it was brought up there, they're not in a position to contribute.
Well, I will say that the financial position of Vianna is in right now. They might, I mean, it's no fault of the residents. They might be in a situation where they may have to use a, buy a used ambulance somewhere, limp through this.
But I'm not, I'm not, I mean.
Maybe not be rewarded with brand-new ambulance and all the stuff when they're in in a hole already as it is. You would have to go crow and and use some used stuff for a while till they, till they dig out of situation that they're in.
I don't, I don't necessarily disagree.
I mean, I mean, they're good people there, unfortunately, there's a crime that that occurred, and everyone's the victim there, including the trustees. But they are in that situation, and when you're looking at other areas. Um.
Yeah, no, I agree, I agree.
As much of a lifeline as we can, help them, support them, I know the auditor's office has been over backwards to be there for them, um.
And and to mention, they were one of the last ones coming in.
Correct.
For for this ask, so.
Um. Divided evenly, one fifty, is that what you're wasting it? So, wait a second. If, take away the the two seventy-five. So, without, uh, just to give you, I'm gonna give you an overview of what you've got. Already and what you have left with this, so that you know what we're talking about. Lordstown Village, two hundred thousand. Warren Township Ambulance, one seventy-five, Community Legal Aid, fifty, Best Purpose, fifty. Warren Family Mission, fifty, Weathersfield Township Multi-Jurisdictional, one fifty. The Warren Amateur Radio Association for fifty-nine ninety-sixty-three, that gives you a total remaining. At one seventy-one, one seventy-eight, oh six. Might I suggest that you, that you not necessarily divided evenly. That one seventy-one, one seventy-six, oh six, but because McDonald Village has already had a hundred thousand or six people. Perhaps. Seventy for McDonald and one oh one, one seventy-eight, oh six, and I'm fine with you guys coming down to the last dollar. Because we know we're gonna have so much ritual on some of these.
But like you said, but one-on-one, is that gonna do anything for Vianna? I mean, they're not gonna be able to. They're not gonna be able to pay for this two hundred eighty-six thousand ambulance they got right now, they're gonna have to give that back.
Yeah.
Now they're gonna be situated like they said, down the road, are they gonna do for an ambulance? Um, they may have to pick up one of them, buy all these other ambulances, they're gonna free up used ambulances from other places.
Yeah.
Maybe we can appeal to it, McDonald or Champion or Warren Township or somebody to work with Vianna to sell them a used ambulance.
Yeah.
With that money.
Well, and and I think that, I I see we're honored or yielded to wrong with that, but I I don't want to. I don't wanna penalize McDonald for what happened in Vianna, you know, I mean, so if we, if we were to just do it evenly. And you can't, can't necessarily call.
And 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 I, Martha your Trump County Auditor, I only. And I understand what you're, what you're saying, but because they had already done that, that's, it's not necessarily penal, trying to penalize them. But I do understand your point.
Township, I mean, that's a village.
It's a village.
With with some police for that, I mean, everything, um, and they and they didn't get a lot of our money, there's been small townships that have gotten a lot. So I think that's one seventy-five for McDonald, it's not.
No, just, no, just also, Martha your Trump County Auditor, um, just to point out, um. Christie has pointed out to me that the the McDonald one, um, and the Vianna one. Well, those, those applications only came in forty years ago. Just to point that.
Well, I know they're both late, I know.
So if you were to divide them evenly with the remaining money, it would be eighty-five thousand, five eighty-nine, oh three for each.
That'd be fine with that. What was the other hundred thousand, McDonald?
McDonald got, um, it was, you have to look it up, but it was equipment and P P E and things like that, boy, they're fired.
Hundred thousand?
Yes. Right, they got radio, that's true, Vianna did get twenty-five thousand dollars in marks raised, twenty-five five. For voice police department, correct?
Radio is, is what the town fire guy.
I thought, no, that was Vianna's. Vianna got that, hold on, may, maybe a misbreak, because I'm pretty sure it was. Quite, they all, they originally had a request.
Says Marx Radio's.
Oh, it's all, you're right, it's correct, you're correct, I apologize, it's all, it's, they had, they had submitted a request. And then with a lower amount, upgraded it to a higher amount, when it came back from, again. Um, when it came back from, uh, this is by memory here too, so just. Brain assault, um, when it came back from A- Attorney Rogers, I brought it to you with the increased amount.
Commissioner, let me recommend something a little different, let's. Commissioner, let me recommend something a little different, let's. Let's put a hold on at one twenty, or not one seventy seven, let's do one fifty.
Hold on just a minute, I'm gonna, I'm gonna interject here, we, commissioners. We are running short on time. And and we have, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stand here, cause I have to, okay? We have to allow for her to rule things eligible.
Yeah.
We have. At this point in time. We have. Five meetings? Left? Potentially, maybe? That is a lot. When you, when you are asking her to come up against a wall, our last meeting. So our drop dead date on all of this, getting these approved, getting resolutions done, getting agreements drafted. Eligibility done, and remember, we have three road projects we're also working on for this that we have to do. Plus the remaining two that are on the yes list. Our drop dead date is December. December, December nineteenth. That's not a lot of time.
Yeah, but hear me out, what I'm saying is. She's got a whole bunch we just gave her to approve. Some are gonna have to be last, and if this is the last two, we may have money.
Coming in.
Coming back in leftovers, she may deny, or or other things, money from other projects. And I like to reserve this, cause any money that comes back in, maybe we can apply to this, then you can each get an ambulance, you know what I'm saying?
Alright.
So, that's, that's why I'm opposed.
I agree, I agree.
And 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 they are analyst requests, which are. A little bit easier, Vianna does need to get that time to get that, some of that stuff together, I will agree with you on that.
And we can talk to McDonald too, to see if a hundred thousand will even help them.
Right.
They said we can't get the other seventy five, so it's gonna be all.
I just, I, I'm going to have, I'm gonna be the sheepdog on all of this, you guys, you're gonna get sick of hearing from me. And and if I, if. You guys have the decision, but I'm gonna tell you this. If I ask you to do a special meeting. I don't wanna hear, I gotta go someplace. This is gotta get done, and I am working my tiny off, literally.
I know, we want.
Get this done.
We, we want it.
And I, and I know I'll be, so here's what we've got, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go through this, and I wanted to say a couple of things really quick too, um. The, uh, from Dominic Marari from the mission, we, um. Fifty K will definitely help. That's, he's gonna be the one, also, um, Jason Minor. Who is the Deputy Fiscal Officer, Warren Township said, asked me to relay, Warren Township thanks the Commissioner and the Auditor for your hard work. Julie, um. Julie had seen this, but I don't. So, go through these and let you know what, make sure from all, from both of you that you're okay with all of this, let you know what is remaining. Um, and then, I want, um, a definite date. From the two of you, that you will meet by to look at these other two. Or you can do it in a workshop, but just, I wanna know, and we wanna, let us set a deadline. Um.
Well, here's, here's what I.
And we, I get a text too that Warren Township said. They have a van ambulance with only seventy thousand miles on it, they would gladly sell it by after seventy five thousand.
Alright. So does that change what you just said?
No, I I still wanna see if, you know, we, we know.
Okay. I I think that there are some of these things that may not, we don't have that.
True, um, although I think we've done a good job today, a better job today than we did.
Oh, yeah.
A year ago.
Oh, yeah.
Thanks a lot to Julie, who is, needs to just go to bed, but.
I'm proud to be able to do this, I have a little. I still feel bad that Green never submitted things, and where there's other people in the township, there are other projects out there.
Some opportunity.
But that's on their trustees, it's on their people to submit it. And they did, we can work what we're given and what we were requested, and. It hurts me to not be able to fund everything, cause there's a lot of good projects that are left here, can't fund. But, there's only so much money that was given, and I, you know, I pledge to work towards assisting and helping any of those other causes in the future. Um, through other means to the best that we can, you know, we're, there is like. Our office is closed now, and you know, it's over and done with, there there are projects we can still. Partner with the community to move forward, and hopefully everybody. Appreciates that and sees that, and and, uh, will work with us on those, on that.
Great.
So, just to review the ones that you've agreed to that I will pass on. And some of them Julie will help me with, uh, as far as changes and things, but. Uh, you have Lordstown Village Water Booster, two hundred thousand. Warren Township Ambulance, one seventy five thousand. Community Legal Aid fifty, Best Purpose fifty, Warren Family Mission fifty. Weathersfield Township Multi Jurisdictional Facility, one fifty. Warren Amateur Radio Association, five, uh, five thousand nine hundred ninety sixty three. You have a remaining amount of one seventy one, one seventy eight oh six. So we're all in agreement on that, um.
That should keep them busy for a little while.
It should, absolutely, keep all of this.
Yeah.
So I will do that.
Thank you.
The one, the only, uh, one other thing that. I guess looking at this, I wish we had. Wes Farmington has a request on air for ball fields. We did that tour the other day with Economic, um. People that we hosted the other day, and we saw how important ball fields are in the Amish community. I mean, they're softball playing machines, uh, softball, baseball. And, uh, oh, it's unreal, they had sporting stores there, the hunting and fishing section, that's hunting, fishing and softball. And I, and I don't know how much they get utilized there, Martha.
They do get utilized a lot, I live there, um, uh, Martha, your Trump County Auditor. I will say that when you come back. And look at your remaining amount, if that's increased, you may want to look at that, or even look at a portion of that. Um, that would be a way to address that, cause you're correct, some of these may come back as. As no, and so.
That would be the one, I guess, that I would wanna put forward if we had any money that came back.
Alright, okay, and so we'll remember that. So, are, and my.
Yeah, we need to move on to.
Excuse me for about five minutes.
Yeah, can, can we take just a quick break?
Yes, take a recess, we'll come back and.
Reconvene, motion reconvene, I guess?
Mr. Page on ASO?
Yes.
Yes, ten forty nine AM. Thank you, Michelle, I would prefer you'd read these.
That's fine, that's fine.
Can I do one thing before?
Yes, start it.
Auditor, um, Martha Trump County Auditor, um, we did just finish, and I know a lot of people are still in here for the public meeting. I wanna make it really clear what the process is for those requests.
Yeah.
Because I think last time, there was some misunderstandings on it, so I think it's important for people to understand where we go from. Everything that we, uh, that you approved. Um, I will send on to our legal counsel, Attorney Rogers from Baker, uh, Dubacard. And. Everything that you approved is contingent upon eligibility. Because a lot of times, I I think in the last, last year, what happened, they approved me, when do I get my money? Doesn't work that way, so the process is, it goes to the attorney, the attorney, uh, does eligibility, um. Then provides the resolutions and the agreements, and then the commissioners re-vote. And while we're on that subject, um, because of the sake of time, if it's okay with both commissioners. I will make sure that when I send these to Attorney Rogers, that as she finds them eligible. She also creates resolutions and and agreements, that will expedite, I think, we.
Yeah, so those were all approved.
Perfect, check.
That she proved.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, uh. I have number one, dismissed with a reading in a minute, obviously, I have number two, prove bills. I have number three, transfer monies, auditor re-ordered. Or Christie?
I'm sure, um, Christie's Sisery Auditor's Office, the first one I have is to transfer money. There are three requests, the auditor's office is requesting transfer at one million, five hundred fifty two thousand, seven hundred fifty four dollars and fifty six cents. And that is, uh, third quarter interest. Um, and we're just transferring that from the interest fund to a general fund mostly, and then a few special revenues taken. The highway request is a hundred and thirty seven thousand, seven hundred ninety dollars and sixty cents, and that is for, um. The December twenty four debt payment transfer. The third one is the prosecutor's office, thirty eight thousand, three hundred ninety nine dollars and twenty cents. And that is a, a vacation sick payout for retiree, they, uh, talked to you guys about at the last workshop. You'll see that in here a couple of different times, because there's some money transferred, then we also have to appropriate for the money transferred, and then you'll also have to appropriate. Or in those payroll funds.
Okay, uh, prove additional appropriate.
So Christie's Sisery Auditor's Office, uh, we have a few from the auditor's office, the first one is two hundred and thirty thousand. Dollars, one forty six ninety one, and that's due to, uh, previous money transfers that were not appropriated. Uh, we've portioned that with senior levy, it, the request was approved last year, uh, when she. Transfer the money, we didn't appropriate it, so we need to appropriate it now. Um, the second request is also the auditor's office, one million, one hundred thirty five. Thousand, eight hundred twenty nine dollars and thirty three cents, and that is to increase the budget for additional interest as recommended by the treasurer's office. The third one is the also the auditor's office, thirty eight thousand, three ninety nine, twenty. And that is to appropriate and fund the sales tax fund for the, um, money transfer for the vacation sick payout for prosecutor's office. Also the auditor's office, eight hundred fifty dollars, that's windows, um, some window repair in the IT department. Um, dog kennel, seventy four thousand, three hundred eighteen dollars and forty one cents, that was a donation they received. And they're planning to use that for the medical. Uh, prosecutor's office, thirty eight thousand, three ninety nine. We kind of ninety nine dollars and twenty cents, and that is also to improve. Uh, to do additional appropriations in the general fund and their payroll accounts. Sheriff's Office, four thousand, nine hundred thirty three dollars and sixty three cents, and that is in their special revenue fund to purchase body shields.
Okay. Questions about any of that? Not, uh, proof transfer appropriate now?
Again, Christie's Sisery Auditor's Office, um, first one is the auditor's office, fifteen thousand dollars. This is to fix feature hospitalization and life insurance budget issues. Uh, the second one is thirty thousand dollars in the, um, fund, oh, oh, seven, or the real estate fund. Also to fix feature hospitalization and life insurance budget issues.
And the Martha Trump County Auditor, and the reason that there are two separate things, is we pay our payroll on two separate funds, general fund.
And job duties. Um. Third one, boarded developmental disability, sixty seven thousand, six hundred fifty dollars, and this is to replace dropped ceiling tiles. Uh, to, uh, damage due to roof leaks. Board of Health, five thousand dollars, increase in operations supplies. Board of Health, three thousand, two hundred seventy five dollars, increasing gasoline. Central Port, a thousand dollars, increase in unemployment compensation. Children's Services Board, five thousand, increase clothing costs for children in foster care. Commissioners Office, twenty five hundred dollars, increased, uh, computer subscriptions. Orner, seven hundred dollars, uniform jackets, orner, fifteen hundred dollars, radiation specialist consultant. Dog kennel, five hundred dollars, increasing utilities. Eastern Court, six hundred dollars, increase in seminars and training. Planning Commission has four, seven hundred ninety seven dollars. Seven hundred ninety seven dollars and eighty five cents, VLEW pro licenses, eight hundred. seven hundred ninety-seven dollars and eighty-five cents, VLAW pro licenses, eight hundred four dollars and forty-seven cents bathroom sink, two hundred sixty-eight dollars, Esri computer credits and training, and four hundred dollars seminars and training. Then probate, five thousand dollars, this is some work they're having done on the third floor of the Stone Building. The Recorder's Office, twenty-two dollars, increase in license and permits. Uh, the Sheriff's Office, four thousand six hundred ninety-four dollars, um, so the increase in operations supplies. And then senior levy, two hundred dollars, Tribune Legal ad for transportation. And I will let Bob Marano talk about the sanitary and to be your one.
Thanks, Christie. Um, we have sixty-eight thousand for the hospital purchases of some new vehicles. We have eight thousand dollars for, uh, Champion Water District Engineering Study. Uh, with fifteen thousand dollars for gas and leak interresting there. Two hundred fifty dollars is for employee mileage reimbursement. Uh, twenty thousand dollars for excavating work in repairs in Howland Water District. Thirty-five thousand dollars is for excavating work in repairs in the Southeast Water District. And one hundred dollars to, uh, MFFP over on our Yankee rated project.
Well, is the sixty-eight thousand that going to be accounted for for the used vehicles that are on the?
Correct.
Um, okay. Uh, questions or comments?
Uh, Gary brought us in, and I think, yeah, Commissioner, this is the first time this happened at a hundred dollars. Not on Yankee Lake, we had to take out free roting porn for about five hundred. So we had to calculate, uh, what's the market value, perfectly show a porn, and how many, estimated to be there in that area. But it was kind of interesting, the farmer agreed.
It's a hundred dollars.
Came out of like two, five dollars, they agree. He settled at a hundred bucks, so. Alright, but that was a, something new for us.
Why don't you take care of the farm? Okay, number six, to amend maybe corn, but yeah.
Uh, I, I don't know where that ended up, I'm sorry, but. On, 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 back, yeah.
Okay, to amend agenda item dated September eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Uh, item number sixteen, follows, the word low some responsive, responsible bids by Carbo Companies. Uh, the P H twenty-five C Bushnell Campbell Road Project, the amount of three hundred twenty-four thousand dollars, eight hundred seventy, three hundred twenty-four thousand, eight hundred seventy-five dollars in second. Be paid from Trump County's ARPA funds. No county general funds are required. And to enter into a contract with Carbo Companies, Inc., for said project. This amendment is necessary to add the project, to add that the project will be paid out of ARPA fund number as follows. Uh, note, engineer's estimate is three hundred forty-seven thousand, two hundred twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Martha County of Trump County auditor, just, here's what happened is, um, when this was submitted, and I think it was actually submitted by the Engineer's Office, there was no fund number on it. And we really need to, especially with big things like this, we need to make sure that the fund number is on there. Um, and so we know that, this is, by the way, this is the Vernon project, um, that we are working with the, the Engineer's Office on. And so now that we know that we need to, you know, we, we had this problem, will, it won't happen for the other three. I will, uh, work with Gary Keever to make sure that the agenda items have that fund number, which is just not, uh, on the original. Maybe the better word. So we'll have those coming up, um, over time, as we work through these other three projects. So we'll make sure, uh, Vernon ended up being our guinea pig. So we've learned a lot from Vernon.
They were the first.
Right.
Okay, uh, agenda number seven, to amend agenda item dated May first, twenty twenty-four. Uh, was a drop of resolution for Trump County Commissioners to authorize payment of county funds to DLZ Ohio, Inc., the amount of thirty thousand dollars, partial payment for Warren Township's agreement for professional services. The Levensburg dam desktop study regarding the Trump County Metro Park's Levensburg dam renewal product. Uh, this amendment is necessary to update, study should be paid out of the fund listed.
So, uh, Martha County of Trump County auditor, so Commissioners, what happened here is there was, um, some lack of clarity, um, as to who actually was getting money. Um, this is for the Levensburg dam study. Um, the way that the agenda item read was that it should go directly to, uh, the, um, provider, uh, to the vendor. However, because of the lack of understanding, it was, the fund number was put as from one government entity to another. So it was incorrect. So we had to come up with a fund object code for this and just, uh, amended. And again, it's just, this is a really unusual thing, and it should have been through, uh, the fund number that we initially thought, or that we thought that we, uh, put in there as the amendment. Um, it was just, there was a lot of, you know, there's a lot of back and forth on that one, as to where it should be and everything. Uh, but really, it's better not to do a pass-through with the township. So it is appropriate that it was paid directly to the, to the vendor. It just needed a fund number, but which one?
Thank you.
Do you have any more to answer?
No, we paid directly to.
Yeah, because it, because it came in under the cost of what it is. You refund them, or the engineer getting refunded, the difference, what was?
So I didn't realize that it came in under that. Um, I'll look into that for you, but if, if there's a.
It came around thirty thousand, they put up ten, we put up thirty.
The PO, the PO, um, will be thirty thousand, because that's what the contract was for. And so the invoice should reflect what we pay. We were going to pay, I would say, too, you guys may need to, to talk to the Engineer's Office about this. But if, to me, we said, they would pay ten, and we would pay three, so we would be responsible for three quarters of the invoice.
Right, right.
That was, that's what makes sense to me, but hopefully, that's also what makes sense to me.
Right, that's, that, that was brought to me that way, too. We had to want to give back, um, twenty-five percent of whatever.
Right, if it's, right, it would be, whatever, whatever you said it was, the total was thirty thousand, whatever, it would be, you would pay three quarters of that.
No, there is some, they, they asked that company come and, have a public meeting, or meeting to discuss their study, and then go and add it on the bill, since there's money left on the bill. So it's still, I was deciding yet exactly how much.
Okay, so, once we get that, you guys may have to actually work it out with the, this board and the, and the engineers on it. Uh, but for now, the PO, what we would have as a PO would be, now that we have the appropriate fund number, the fiscal certificate, all of that will reflect thirty thousand dollars, just like anything else that we, you guys approve, at a certain amount, if it comes in less, you pay less, you don't pay the whole deal.
Okay, thank you. Uh, number eight, to advertise for bids for the furnishing of all labor, material equipment necessary for the Trump County Fairgrounds four-H building replacement project. Uh, in accordance with project specs, uh, special note, project contract documents included, available Trump County Prosecutor's Office. Mike Switzke, speak to that a little bit.
Sure. Commissioner, this is the last in our project for the fairgrounds. So this is a replacement of the four-H building, like it did now. Capitalize on some off-season bidding, uh, get it awarded by the end of the year, and it's construction, first thing in the spring, and get it built for the fair. So gee, can it go for the first?
Uh, Martha County of Trump County auditor, I want to add that this is one, would like to do an MOU in online, just to make sure that we have all that money obligated. Uh, we may get a bid, that's, and then, um, Julie's working on it, I'm giving some documentation for it, and there's just going to be out. Um, but we want to make sure, maybe get a bid, this loan, change in, like that, we want to make sure everything's covered. So the MOU will obligate the full cost.
Sounds good. Okay.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. Okay, number nine, to reappoint the individual listed as a member of the Trump County Local Corrections Planning Board, with the respective term listed. This action per the request of Tracy S. Hunt, who's the Chief Probation Officer of the Probation Department. And that person is Attorney Laura Brzezinski. Uh, she's Director of Ohio Public Affairs Office for a three-year term, going from October thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, to October thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. Questions on that? Sure. Uh, number ten, to notify the Ohio Department of Liquor Control that a public hearing is not requested. Permit application listed, standard, uh, procedure there. Number eleven is to authorize Danny Lloyd, President of the Board of Trump County Commissioners, to execute on behalf of Trump County the thirty-seventh renewal of the Victims' Crime Act, uh, which is known as BOKA, uh, Victims of Crime Act, and the State Victim Assistance Act, SBAA. Uh, grant application proposal from the Trump County Victim Litmus Division of the Trump County Prosecutor's Office. Grant is for the period of October first, twenty twenty-four, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Total proposed amount of the grant is eighty-three thousand, two hundred twenty-six dollars, zero cents. With Victims of Crime Act, uh, grant money's funding sixty-six thousand, five hundred eighty-two dollars, of zero cents, in Trump County's local twenty percent required match, sixteen thousand, six hundred forty-four dollars. With an additional nine thousand, three hundred ninety dollars, State Victim Assistance Act. Uh, funding, funding being requested, requires no match in Trump County. Letter from the, uh, Prosecutor's Office dated October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. Signature page of the grant application shall be reported onto the Journal for record purposes. Uh, special note, at such time, Trump County does not receive funding by the Attorney General's Office for these grants. For the Trump County Commissioners has no obligation to fund this program. This is something that we do, Bill here. Something that we apply for yearly, uh, that assists in, um, uh, offsets the cost of salaries in the Prosecutor's Office, um, for, um, all those cases that they see recently. Bill.
It's not hard.
We're on the bill.
It's a whole type of bill.
So, uh, pretty standard, and obviously, we're not on, the county's not on, for anything if they don't see the terms. Uh, pretty standard. Uh, number twelve, to adopt a resolution, reappointing Attorney Eric Fink, of Lake County, as a member of the Northeast Ohio Community Alternative Program, NEO cap. Uh, their governing board for a three-year term expiring November ninth, twenty twenty-seven. Uh, again, pretty standard, um, that's a multi-county agency, NEO cap, that, uh, that we utilize here in Portage, Lake, Georgia, actual, and Trump. And, um, seven, please judge this, those respective counties. Well, number thirteen, to rename existing fund number two oh seven to BCI Electronic Reporting. Uh, this is for the purpose of setting up federal reimbursable grant with the port that received the amount of one thousand seventy-five dollars in the Ohio General, Ohio Attorney General's Office, intending to electronically reporting juvenile case dispositions via BCI. Uh, and this action per the request of Stacy Zista, juvenile court administrator, uh, from County Doot not case. Fourteen, I mean, based upon, it's kind of a weird way to start, based upon the substance of Trump County Assistant Prosecuting Attorney Jason Toth's October sixteenth, twenty twenty-four letter to the Trump County Board of Commissioners. Board of Commissioners gives its informed consent to the Trump County Prosecutor's Office, including Mr. Toth, to represent our multiple clients, including Bezetta Township, in review of R C five-five-three-five dot O eight agreement to resurface McClear Jacoby Road, Bezetta Township drafted by Tony Rogers, uh, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners.
Martha County of Trump County auditor, um, this is what's required in order for Jason Toth, or the, actually, the Prosecutor's Office generally, to be able to review that agreement. Um, and this is the next step, this is for Bezetta, this is the next step in that road process. That's, you're looking at the.
I'm looking at the wrong sheet.
Yeah, because it's still, it's still on the, the yes sheet.
Yes.
Because we haven't completed the review. Once it gets through that, it goes. So, what, the process on these road agreements, because we have two more of them, just so you guys understand. The scope of the, the town, the township side on their part, they agree in, within a trustee meeting to do so. Once we, once, uh, the Engineer's Office has that, the, um, they have a scope of the project that is sent to Attorney Rogers to review and draft the agreement. On Vernon's, we also had to have a concurrent representation letter for Baker, Baker Dubacar, because she had represented that. We don't need it for any of the other three. At this point, um, actually, I got an email one after I said this about, uh, Mesco's. Uh, both Mesco and Farmingtons are with, um, Attorney Rogers, that they're at that step, and she had the scope. She takes that scope, she draws up an agreement. The agreement then comes back to Attorney Toth. Attorney Toth has to have, um, this passed in order for him to look at it. And he sends, he does not leave the agenda item. We did this agenda, the same agenda item in June, in the state, with the same, uh, phrasing. I think we either utilized him or Attorney Danzo to come up with it, alright? Um, and so, oh, we, we put this agenda item on. Once this is approved, then Attorney Toth, or another attorney from the Prosecutor's Office, can then review the agenda agreement. It may go back and forth a little bit, probably not on these, because we've already done one. Again, the guinea pig is done, so we've already gotten through that guinea pig thing. So, uh, but don't go back, you may go back and forth a little bit. Once they have a final agreement, then that goes on the agenda item. And just so that's clear, that agreement obligates the funds. So we don't have to worry about the bids or any of that. That is, that functions in the same way that the MOUs that we've done, alright? So that's where we're at on this. And if you have any other questions, you might want to address them to Attorney Toth. But my part of this is just getting it on the agenda, and now understanding the process, which they sent I.
I'd like to, thank you for that. So, um, number fifteen, to concur with the Trump County Engineer to grant the right-of-way permits. Uh, question by the company listed, which is Enbridge, Gas of Ohio. Sixty is to concur with Trump County Engineer to grant the special ambulance supplier fleet permits. The fleet vehicles transporting aggregate concrete, construction materials, other raw material. And those are Dayton Freight Lines, Garth, Onar Trucking and Excavating, FedEx Freight. And seventeen is to concur with the Trump County Engineer to close the following roadway. It's Morford East Road, which the closing date will be Monday, November fourth, twenty twenty-four, through Friday, November fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Again, that closure is November fourth, twenty twenty-four, through Friday, November fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. That's listening, that's in Ginsman Township. Uh, number eighteen is to authorize Danny Lloyd, President of the Board of Commissioners, execute on behalf of Trump County, renewal certification, certification application in Ohio, natural gas governmental aggregators with the Public Utilities Commission. Um, current certificate is effective for the period of January twentieth, twenty twenty-three, through January twentieth, twenty twenty-five. The application term is January twentieth, twenty twenty-five, through January twentieth, twenty twenty-seven. This action for the recommendation of Tom Bellish, our president of Buckeye Energy Group. Know that this has been a issue in the past, but I'm comfortable with Mr. Bellish moving forward. Uh, especially when you look at track record that he's had here in Trump County, compared to, other brokers in different parts of the state. Um, I think it's kind of unique that he has us as his largest client, so that, um, he's not sort of bogged down by a lot of other clients that, that could take precedent over Trump County. He focuses on Trump County, very community to, uh, in the years that he's been here, and, and I'm, I feel from moving.
This is just the natural gas for, this for the county buildings, or is this for?
This is not the aggregation. This is just for, this is, this is for the building. I believe. I'd have to double check on it.
Can we get?
Sharon, you listening? Can you come in here, Sharon, if you're listening?
Sure, go ahead. Um, while you're waiting, um, Martha, you're, oh, honey, auditor, seventeen, by the way, that was in our project. They contracted a meeting, just so you know, just a point. Um, while you're waiting, um, Martha, you're, oh, honey, auditor, seventeen, by the way, that was an ARPA project. They contracted me, just so you know, just to point.
I wasn't listening. I was talking.
So, gen item eighteen, is that the aggregation program or is that the, our buildings? Or is that?
This is the, just the certification, because we are actually under contract. Let's just say. We just have to do an report from the way I understand it. From time to time, it's effective for a period of January thirty, twenty-three to twenty-five, and I think we're under contract till twenty-six or, or gas aggregate.
Okay, so this is an electric, this is gas?
No, this is just gas and I, I, we're under contract with them for that.
So, that's not even up for discussion.
No.
Right, um.
Yeah, this is, I think we just have to do a certification for the P U C L, is what I think this is. I don't think it's anything more than that.
Gotcha. Thank you so much.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nineteen, to accept the fund number is listed. Issued by Erie Insurance. There's seven sanitary lateral connections for low to moderate income households. And the heat shoot project area funded through B Y two zero two-two, C D B G Residential Public Infrastructure Grant. In the American Rescue Plan Act. Sold by M J, M J D Excavating Inc. M J D Excavating Inc. Requested final payment for the completed work inspected, approved by the Trump County Sanitary Engineers Office. Maintenance bonds in the amount of twenty percent, it's ten thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars. Final project cost, which is fifty-one thousand, four hundred dollars. And it's valid for a period of two years, beginning since September sixth, twenty twenty four, ending September sixth, twenty twenty six.
Lee Moran, Trump County Planning Commission, um, M J D Excavating. I've hit seven low to moderate income households. Um, and Weathersfield Township to newly constructed sanitary sewer. Uh, all the work is done. You have all their final paperwork. Except for maintenance.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Derek. Number twenty, to authorize the advertising of a public notice, the tripping protocol, number first, twenty twenty four. Announcing timeframe for and location of. Request for price proposal packages for the P Y twenty-three Community Development Block Grant. C D B G Community Development Program revolving loan fund. R L F Howland Scope Senior, Howland Scope Center Improvements Project. Trump County Planning Commission will submit the advertisement through column. Through column, pay the advertisement through the fund number is listed. Go ahead.
Emily Moran, Trump County Planning Commission, again, um, this is part of the P Y twenty-three C D B G grant. Um, we did bid this project once on October first. Uh, we did not receive any bids. Um, so this time, we are going to hold a mandatory pre-bid meeting, um, at Howland, so that. Those who take out plans are able to ask questions, because there's multiple components to the, to the project. Hopefully that will help.
Can't believe we didn't get any bidders at first time. Hey, let's hope we do, um. Okay, number twenty-one, to award a contract by the lowest and best bid, submitted by D J V Supplies Inc. Uh, with Trump County Planning Commission Carpet Replacement Project. The amount of twenty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty-eight cents. Authorized by the Trump County Commissioners to enter into a contract to bring in. D J V Supplies Inc.
Uh, Zach Steiner, uh, Trump County Plan Commission, um. Uh, we're asking that we table this item, uh, to a future meeting. We're working with an M O U. Uh, to free up some funds and move it over to cover this cost, so we're working with.
Remove it right now. We won't even put it on the agenda. We won't table it. Yeah, Commissioner, is that good? Just remove it for now and then we'll put it on a later date?
As soon as, uh, working with the auditor, we have that figured out, we'll get that that month.
Thank you, Zach.
Thank you.
Do we have to re-bid it or anything? Or just table?
Well, we have, we have a sixty-day window. Uh, we have a sixty-day window from when it was bid, so hopefully we'll be able to get this through within that sixty days. If not, um, Julie and I have talked about, she's, she said there's multiple ways we could handle by going back to the bidder or coming to you guys with other options. So, uh.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, number twenty-two, to approve the personal action for the employment transfer of Mr. Robert Dillard. Position of labor, pay range three at twenty years. Nineteen dollars and seventy-nine cents. Position of maintenance worker. Pay range eight, twenty years. Twenty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents. Trump County Sanitary Engineers Department. Back to Thursday, October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Pursuant to the, the authorized job posting. October fourth to October twenty, twenty-four. But.
Commissioners Bob Maras and Sanitary Engineers, um, this is a routine union. We transfer, uh, we only had one. Boy bid, uh, this job was required to have C B L and some maintenance experience. As a C B L and maintenance experience. He went out and shadowed our client maintenance worker, still one of the God, um. We've had a temporary transfer to our, and he's been doing the job well, uh. We did have two candidates on the outside, uh. And eventually we'll talk to them about other jobs once they, uh, get through all these returns and transfers.
Okay. Okay, number twenty-three, to approve or deny construction of county project number. Two-nine dash S dash ninety-seven, the Meadowbrook Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project. Located in Warren Township. Public carry for this project will sell on October third. Should be a two, not a three. For the record.
The bank account to another one.
Uh, yeah. It's okay. October third, uh, for the record, twenty twenty-four. Results of the public hearing and public comment period indicate ninety-eight point two percent of property owners. Favor of said project. I don't know how, but one point eight percent are opposed based on number of service connections. Gary, I don't know if anybody can be opposed.
Yeah, Gary Newbrow, Trump County Sanitary Engineer, uh, yeah, Commissioners, you were at the hearing on October the third. Um. There were only two people who had, uh, opposed it and asked for the deadline for the written, uh, public comments. That's what it's all about at the beginning. There's only two people in this phase of project that are. Uh, opposed to it more like, so, great, I think this is a great support. Just a resonance there.
Yeah, so it's a necessary for public health and safety.
Well, yes.
Okay, uh, number twenty-four, to authorize the purchase of a used. Twenty-three Ram fifteen-hundred tradesman pickup truck. With fourteen thousand, eight hundred and ten miles. And that's from Jeff's Motor Cars. Dressler Road Northwest, North Camp, Ohio. For use by the Trump County Sanitary Engineers Department in the amount, in the total amount of twenty-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars. Vehicle will replace, special note, vehicle will replace a two, two thousand and six Dodge Stratus with approximately eighty thousand miles. In a rusted-out frame. Cross number that could not be repaired. Uh.
Uh, Commissioners Bob Maras and Sanitary Engineers, um, number twenty-five also relates to this as well.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. Read that and I can put together.
Uh, yeah, so twenty-five is to authorize the purchase of a used two thousand and twenty-two Ram. Uh, fifteen-hundred tradesman pickup truck with eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-one miles. Stadium G M Superstore. Salem, Ohio. Reused by the Trump County Sanitary Engineers Department in the amount of twenty-four thousand, nine hundred dollars. Uh, this vehicle will replace a two thousand and six GMC Canyon. With approximately hundred eighty-six thousand miles. And frame damage and force spots that could not be repaired. And the other vehicles, uh, are as listed on both of these that you obviously got quotes from.
So, Bob Maras and Sanitary Engineers, um, typically we have been buying brand new vehicles from state purchasing. A new pickup truck is, uh, forty thousand dollars each, forty-two thousand dollars each, anyone. So, decided to try to purchase these vehicles, because that's. So, I, uh, talked to Bill Danzel about the process I wanted to do and, uh, Bill agreed. So, Eric said, I could do it because it was under the seventy-five thousand dollar threshold that he didn't want to go out for. Uh. So, what I did is I went to cars dot com and kind of established some criteria, what we were looking for. Um, you know, our criteria was a full-size truck, looking in a hundred miles of porn. Um, no accident history, uh, model year twenty twenty-one newer, mileage less than twenty thousand, and color being white. Uh, I got. A hundred options to choose from, basically filtered it, and I took. Four, three lowest prices, um, which all happened to be Dodge Ram fifteen-hundred tradesman. And I emailed all three dealerships, asking for the best price in the quote. Um, quotes are listed, you know, Bandevier Chevy actually sold the truck in the quotation process. So, they submitted a quote for a G M Silverado, Chevy Silverado, twenty-seven thousand. Um, looking for two vehicles, so we're recommended by two lowest quotes.
Hey, Martha, you're Trump County Auditor, just pointing out to you, the lower quotes actually come from my reach too, which is. But helpful to you.
Yeah. Our Ram trucks, pretty reliable, as far as.
We have, we've currently had Rams in our fleet now, had no issues compared to a Chevy compared to.
Um, okay, uh. Twenty-six, to remove from table, item number twenty-nine. Commissioners needing agenda, the date of August seventh, twenty twenty-four. J V one fifty-eight, page two, six, six, eight, four, which read, um. To approve the school resource officer agreement by between the Trump County Commissioners. Trump County Sheriff Paul S. Monroe. Joseph Badger Local School District, Board of Education. Kinsman, Ohio. The address listed for Police Protection and Services from Joseph Badger Local School District. Buildings and activities, personnel, students, and public on-site paid twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Academic fiscal school year, July first, twenty twenty-four. Moving June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Joseph Badger Local School District agrees to pay the Trump County Sheriff's Office seventy thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eighty-four cents. The invoice by the Trump County Sheriff's Office. This action per the request of the Trump County Sheriff. So, essentially, this is just, uh, I'm sorry. Major Villanueva?
Tony Villanueva, Trump County Sheriff's Office, uh, number twenty-six is to read the, the table. Uh, I just see a correction to be made. The seventy thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollar, eighty cents is the new amount.
Okay.
So, we remove, uh, that one from the table, uh, it's a lower amount.
Okay. Off the start, I have started.
Um, and that moves on into, uh, twenty-seven, which is the correct amount. That we, you know, looking. Prosecutor's Office.
That's inclusive of the contracts and.
Yes.
Um, all the, all the.
The twenty-seven, twenty-eight, both reflect the number. One for Badger, one for Bristol.
That's correct. Um, and these are the last of the school resource officer positions.
Okay.
Beats that up. Thank you.
Okay. Little with those.
Uh, Major, would they have like basketball games at night or other things? That's. In addition, that's something where it's, they, they deal directly with the deputy? How do they do that?
That's, that's.
Part of this.
That's an off-duty detail.
Yeah, off-duty detail, but they schedule independently of.
Correct. They just pay the officer as contractor.
And if that officer can't work yet, they can.
Whatever, yeah. Okay. Interesting. Okay, uh, twenty-nine, moving forward with those, obviously those are self-explanatory. Twenty-nine, to approve the purchase of five best deck command posts from A T and T. Current nine-one-one C P E maintenance provider, in the amount of one hundred, twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars. For ARPA Fund number. Zero seven, seven, one, one, dash, your, one, zero, zero. Dash, one, zero, 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 dash, one, dash, I'm zero, five. Four, one, seven, I didn't realize it was gonna be that long.
Like same number, so.
I hate it, uh. Received under, um. House Bill, uh, four eighty-one, is authorized by resolution of the Trump County Board of Commissioners on October ninth, twenty twenty-four. Journal volume one fifty-eight, listed. This purchase falls under Rosy Loss and ARPA, and as such, follows state bidding requirements. Exempt from bidding per O R C one twenty dot oh three, uh, Casey.
Stacy McDon and nine-one-one Director, um, these are the ARPA requests that will go into the command post. Um, they're exempt from state bid because of they are related to nine-one-one for the O R C. Um, Bill has approved that. Uh, we're going with our A T T vendor who we're under contract with, so it's just an extension, and they were able to honor the prices from back. Almost what, two and a half years ago now? Something like that. I suppose we'll go in the command vehicle and those will be, could be go, so if we ever. Vacate our dispatch building, we can go in the command vehicle, dispatch from there.
And, and all three of these go along with that?
Yes.
Yeah, all three of these, I'm sorry. Trump County, Martha, you're a Trump County Auditor, all three of these, uh, because they're three separate equipments, piece of equipment, that's why we have three separate ones, but they were all on the same resolution.
Okay.
For the ARPA funds, these next two, and Stacy can kind of fill you in a little bit more, but there's agreements that go with those. Um, but they're the same agree, it'll be an identical agreement for each one, but it's. And then there was a lot of back and forth, which was a lot. But those, we wanted to get as soon as we could, because we need to get the pricing honored. They were only going to go to November.
Yes, we need to get, by then, that we're going forward.
Okay, just for the record, we'll read them into the, uh, to the record. Number thirty is to accept an award. The proposal submitted by Motorola Solutions, uh, for two. M C C seven-five-zero-zero E. Operator positions upgrade of existing M C C seven-five-zero-zero positions to. Seven-five-zero-zero E and the amount of two hundred and thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars from ARPA Fund. Listed, received under H P four eighty-one. It's authorized by resolution of the Trump County Board of Commissioners on, on October ninth, twenty twenty-four. Journal volume one fifty-eight. Uh, and to further authorize Danny Lloyd, President of the Board of Commissioners, execute and. To execute any and all documents that should be, any and all documents.
Sorry.
No, you're good, you're good.
It's fun reading it, it was even more.
Yeah. A- any and all documents required for this agreement on behalf of Trump County. Um, Casey, you want to speak a little bit to that, too?
Stacy McDon and nine-one-one Director, those were the, the additional two radio positions.
Okay.
And then the next one that you're gonna read is the update of the existing radio positions, because those are no longer compatible. Uh, so, and essential, uh, we're, we're basically up. Outfitting the command vehicle, but we're also updating the dispatch radios that are currently in dispatch at our center.
I see.
Uh, and those Motorola, it could fall under being exempt, because it's related to nine-one-one. Uh, that's a little blurry, but they also have, uh, proprietary, um, equipment software, so, uh, except this one a bit.
Good. Okay, any questions on any of those, Commissioner? Moving on, um. Thirty-two is to adopt a resolution authorizing expenditure for responding to or mitigating public health emergency from American Rescue Plan Act funds. Uh, for, uh, scope access, uh, family services. And, um. Okay, these are a one-time grant to access scope. Amount of eighteen thousand dollars for the purchase of A E D. And first aid equipment for each of the six senior centers, and these are centrally, if you later. Okay, thank you.
And, uh, Martha, you're a Trump County Auditor, yeah, um, just the only thing on this, just because it may come up. Uh, it's still scope, but access runs it rather than family and community services, that change happened. Sounds like it's a lot of the same employees, because the employee that, uh. In the email traffic that, uh, Attorney Rogers was dealing with remain the same, it's just a change.
Okay.
Or maybe that. Even though the actual original application came in, the family and community services. Or you need it, even though the actual original application came in, the family and community services changed. The next result, the next one is the agreement.
That's right, the next one goes along with that, um. Number thirty-four to adopt a resolution authorizing expenditure. For responding to or mitigating public health emergency in American Rescue Plan Act funds for Bolandale Christian Church for food pantries. And on the next page there, it's a one-time grant to the Bolandale Christian Church in the amount of sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Used to convert the current food pantry space to a quote client choice model. For the distribution of the food assistance to eligible residents.
Martha, Tormal County Auditor, just to clarify on this, this original request came from Holland Township.
Yes.
Um, but because it was better not to do it as a pat pass through, pass through the township to the. Um, to the uh food uh food pantry, the Bolandale Christian Church, they redid the application while working with Attorney Rogers. Um, as Bolandale Christian Church, so that's why the award is directly to them, red that passing through. And once again, the next one is just the agreement.
Yes, absolutely, so thirty-five goes along with that. Thirty-six is to adopt a resolution, uh, authorizing expenditure for responding to or mitigating public health emergency from. American Rescue Plan Act funds for Bristol Township ambulance, I know we've, I'm coming with Bristol Township. A lot of back and forth, but um. So this project is a one-time grant to Bristol Township, is hereby authorized and shall be paid for with the ARPA funds in the amount of uh one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, they've been obviously very persistent and we've been able to.
Impatient.
Impatient. And finally, we have a project that's fundable, that they can use a lot, so who knows for that. Uh, number thirty-seven is to enter into an agreement that goes along with it, uh, along with thirty-seven, or excuse me, along with thirty-six. Uh, thirty-eight is to adopt a resolution authorizing expenditure from responding to or mitigating public health emergency. From American Plan, American Rescue Plan funds for Stillwagon Road Water Improvements Project, uh Stormwater and Sewer Projects. Gary, go ahead and. This, this is the additional for, for the entire project?
Well, Commissioners, uh, just Gary Newbrow, Sanitary Engineer, I briefed you, I, I want to say six weeks ago on. These residual project fund that we have these other projects or one of contract A. Bill, he cute and I realized there was another one hundred and thirty dollars in that engineering contract for this big water project. Anyway, I briefed you on that, telling you that um I didn't have enough funds to get the Stillwagon tentative assessments low enough to. Uh, make that project feasible, so. Uh, back then you told me, yeah, this is a good game, landless states produce the residuals from these three projects, but we're still wagging, so we get those assessments. Down to sixty dollars a foot, uh, fortunately that also made us not be able to extend that line down the Anderson Lawrence Road. And that's where we need to, besides these funds, we need additional eighty-five thousand. From um to.
When the weather.
Sixty bucks a foot to be able to go for that extra extension down the Anderson Lawrence Road.
And I think that extension is critical too, obviously, as we talked about housing being a, a sets of.
As a matter of fact, uh, that's why I have meetings announced, we're talking about that exact uh section down there and. I'll hire C T consultants, look at a water model of actually connecting that into denial system. And then a crane drive and put a high pressure bubble would be needed to be able to make that effective for water falling on areas. And I, I have to thank Martha and Julie Green for this, I mean, um. Uh, this one might work if the, if all this happened, but uh between the two of them, they were able to do the brain here and.
We don't need a separate agreement following.
Correct, and what, what, what we do it with this, because it's a county project, you need a separate agreement. However, Martha, Tormal County Auditor, however, there is within the packet that you got on the, on the agenda items. There is an M O U that will be executed and it's, it's approved within this resolution.
Yes.
And that M O U buttons up all the sanitary products, so everything is obligated for all of our sanitary products. In time, time when we're. And that's also accounted for on your reserve.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, that concludes our agenda, um. We've got a very lengthy and productive meeting here today, yes.
I'm sorry, um, Martha, Tormal County Auditor, um, Julie texted me before she drifted off to sleep. Then to, and reminded me to add, make sure I had your consent and on the record for both, from both of you. To loop her in all of these projects that I, that you approved for me to send on so that she can help expedite any eligibility. She's done a terrific job, by the way, and I really appreciate it, you know, she was on vacation, she was emailing us on that. But Stillwagon stuff and some other stuff while she was on vacation. Um, the other thing, two things, I asked for a date when you would address these, can we at least say before the end of November? That, that, that two remain.
Well, I, I think it's gonna depend on how soon she can turn around these other projects, so, you know what I mean? And then we'll know we have to work with.
I'm still gonna be sheepdog, you guys are gonna, you're, you're gonna get nipped. Um, and then do you want me to ask McDonald and Vienna about accepting us on this?
Well, we don't know that. We don't, we don't know what, we don't have a back.
You, hold on, hold on, that's fine.
And I got, I got a text here from Donald's fire chief, he texted me, we're sending you all the cell phone numbers, if you have questions, like.
Okay, no.
All right, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure it's, did nothing get between the, no.
The. Stove hood thing again, going back to that.
The forty-one thousand per.
That could be the ball field, so I'm thinking Los Farmers. So I know Julie's working on that, they've already got what, over some hundred eighty thousand?
That's already, it's not, it's not, it's, it's not, Julie is, Martha, Tormal County Auditor. Julie's done working on it, Attorney Rogers hasn't.
Yeah, sure.
So that's just to clarify.
We'll see what comes with it.
Right, move on to one, just because she has it, doesn't mean that we have to.
So on that one, do you want me to go it, go ahead and have her do a resolution or tell her to hold off on that? When, because all of these now, she's been doing the last couple that we've done, when she sends me the eligibility. She also sends me the resolution and agreement so that, um, to expedite things on that particular one, do you want me to hold off on? So we're not using her time and spending money on that time, that's up to you, thanks, but.
Well, I, I'd like to see if it's eligible.
So just, I mean, what I'm saying is when she sends me the eligibility, she's also sending me right now and I'm asking for that, but the other.
But she could say it's eligible, but not do the.
Do not do the actual.
I'm the first one to see the eligibility.
Okay, that's, that's what, that's fine.
Let's do that.
I will, I will. Thank you, thank you.
Hey, anything else?
Yeah, just, uh. I wanted to propose next week is election day on Tuesday.
Yes.
We encourage all employees to get out and vote on Tuesday.
Of course.
Um, and with that, with some of our colleagues, including yourself being up on Tuesday or whatever. I'd like to propose some, no meeting or workshop next week.
Okay, with that.
If that's, I don't see anything pressing on the agenda that had to be there for next week.
If there is a special meeting, we'll call.
Right, if there's something we need, uh, we, we can do that toward the end of the week, but. At this time for Tuesday and Wednesday, I know Tuesday is gonna be a big day for everybody. And then Wednesday, also, you know, that could be a late night, Tuesday night, so like to propose no meeting next week.
Um, perfect time, okay. Regular, regularly scheduled meeting on the following week and regularly scheduled workshop. Oh, I'm sorry, so push back a day, so the workshop will be Wednesday.
Right.
Your, your, um.
For, for what, what's that?
So the following week, wouldn't, we wouldn't be, because Veterans Day, we wouldn't be meeting, um, Tuesday and Wednesday, it would be Wednesday, Thursday.
Correct, but that's, that's.
What I'm just saying is, you know, for the, for the.
But do we need a?
Was that on Friday?
No, that's the same as Monday.
Yeah, on Sunday. All right.
So do we need a? Do I need to make a motion, should we vote on that, that you not have the meeting next week, or just do it this way? Per the email that we got the other day, uh, I just want to make sure we're.
Yeah, all intents and purposes, I guess I'll make a motion that there will be no meeting or no workshop next week.
I'll second it.
Mr. James, why is that?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Zoom, obviously.
Following week, so, so Lisa, tomorrow when we write up, or when I announce the beginning, do the following week with the adjustment, make sure. And, um. You know, the, let department heads know too, that they're, they have until. Uh, next Thursday to get items for the agenda, not this Thursday, have till next Thursday to be able to do that. So give someone extra week to catch up on any agenda items that we have.
So Commissioners, Alex, Steve, Nancy Bush, three things, then, if we're not gonna have a meeting next week, it's extremely important. We should probably send out a reminder, Lisa, that budgets are due eleven twelve. Um, because with no meeting next week, basically they're coming back from the holiday on the eleventh, and the first day back is the twelfth, and all budgets are due for the entire county. Uh, again, everybody, probably, everybody. So that's extremely important that every department head and or elected official is meeting those deadlines because we have budget hearings eleven twenty-five and eleven twenty-six. Um, and then also while I'm here, my boy, um, our course renewal every year, H R has to go through every single inventory in this county. We have been sending out all the spreadsheets to you, everybody in this county, again, not just under the Commissioners, but the Sheriff's Office, the Prosecutors, anything that you own. Needs to be put into that spreadsheet, once we send it to you, we have a hard deadline of eleven fifteen to turn that into corset, to make sure that everything in this county is insured. Um, again, please note, cars, buildings, property, all of that is insured by corset, so it is extremely important. If it is not on your log that we're sending to you, you have to add it, otherwise it's non-existent and non-insured, and if something happens. Oh, well, sorry, but it's just the truth, so, um, it's a lot, it's a lot of inventory, so I'm encouraging all department head people. To start looking at what we started sending out, we sent it out, we started sending it out two weeks ago, so please start looking at that.
Thank you.
And then also last thing, eleven fourteen, which would be the meeting, um, we have mediation for twenty-four ninety-three contract, that's extremely important. Um, so I will not be in attendance to that meeting, nor will Gary, I need you in mediation with me, I'm sorry. Um, so I wanted to make sure you guys knew that.
Which day was this, huh?
November fourteenth, so we had already scheduled this.
Right.
Otherwise, we're not.
Okay, so you're saying the Commissioners meeting falls on that same day?
Yes.
Okay, on the third.
But we've already heard the meeting.
Well, yeah, I did, but.
Or no, you can.
Sorry, I, I'll send Bob and Bob, uh, if Bob has, you know, financial things.
Sure, I just want to make sure it's extremely important that we tend to this as well, um, because we are paying, it's pretty to be here to help us. Move this forward, so we need to be in attendance.
Matter of fact, I need Bob to get that mediated.
Yeah, you're gonna be fine.
Well, I kind of was telling.
Next time, I'm here.
I'm kind of telling you, you both need to be there, sorry.
But.
Well, just so you guys are aware that none of us will be here that day, I mean, we'll be here, but we won't be.
Okay, so at this point. We have no meeting next week. And we're good on the twelve thirteenth, nineteenth, twentieth, budget hearings on the twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth.
Will it be the thirteen, fourteen, nineteen, fourteen, sorry, I just want to make sure you're clear.
Thirteen, fourteen.
I mean, if you do, while we have. So that's what we're, we're gonna say, it'll be the thirteen, fourteen, because we're not here in class. That was the problem with us having, because we had that Thursday meeting pre-scheduled for mediation. Um, but with the change in schedule, there's, you know, the meeting, a problem come to anyone.
Does that work for you, thirteen, fourteen? Uh, I'll have to schedule a time on that. No, that, that we started.
Nineteenth, twentieth. And then the twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, no meeting on the twenty-seventh.
That's true, that's true, I mean, twenty fifth, twenty sixth are budget hearings. That's what I was.
Right.
Yep.
So what now?
So you don't.
Monday, Tuesday, we have budget hearings, but on Wednesday, the day before Thanksgiving, we have nothing.
No meeting now, so two in November.
And then. Yeah, we'll deal with.
Yeah, it's like for November. Okay, anything else?
I got one, Commissioner.
I'm sorry, go over, Bill.
Uh, Phil Hart, Tormal County Mayor, it's out of the odor, waiting patiently, um, we had a twenty nine, one thousand nine hundred and eighty-dollar. Allocated for the border project, the final bill came at sixteen, so it'll be like a five thousand dollar.
So we'll have a little bit more, that one we need again.
So, sorry, it took so long, but.
I need, and sorry, so if there's a P O, the P O needs to be liquidated.
Yep, as soon as I get this bill signed, stand to give to share, that process is done.
And then I'll, I'll adjust it on the information.
So, um, second is all the tower you in, inquired about last week for the bizetta for a communications tower.
Yes.
Uh, it'd be around a million dollars for that sort of tower, so just keep in the back of your mind, it's something if you want to go for, but then.
Got revenue to reap, reap off of that though.
I don't know what the revenue would be on that issue, um, I've been discussing this with the tower people that are doing the Brookfield Tower, Mark's Tower people. Um, we build it, they'll come, that's what we're told, so. Don't know what kind of, uh, you know, revenue is gonna get out of that, because it's gonna be like a shared type system, it's their tower, their stuff. Uh, we get something for it being on our property and, uh, paying for the tower, of course, but they supply all the stuff.
So we, we front the money after build the tower, then they lease the space off of that tower from us.
They maintain it, Mark's Tower maintains that tower.
Mark's Tower.
Like the communications tower in Brookfield, it's the same scenario, they're putting it up and they're gonna maintain it. The, the generator, the lighting, whatever incorporates in that tower.
Horizon, do you make that?
All the stuff, yes.
So, 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 Mark's will maintain, yeah.
The Marks, Marks, uh, Tim Hefford, Tormal County Commissary, um, Marks will maintain that. They will provide the space for, for all the cell carriers to, to hang antennas on, which will provide that for the tire. And that we can lease that space from itself.
Right, but do we need a tower there for Marks, I mean.
Yes, yeah, Marks, Marks has limited coverage out there, so it would be ideal for them. Uh, once we start the process of getting the tower project, get the property engineer and all that, we get the Marks people on board, then we. Uh, see. It's a good process. More upon from, you know, the potential maybe site for nine-one-one site or two as well, and it would help broadcast.
It should be able to pay for itself in the long run, off the rent that we get from A T T.
But yeah, it'll help service the northern and far north, Erie, Cleveland, that type area, help boost that signal as well that way. So. Plus also to give year-round coverage. Year-round for all the residents.
The neighbors, that neighborhood.
Yes. Residents.
Okay.
Okay, let's keep moving forward that best we can.
We're moving.
Okay, nothing else, make motion, entertain a motion, sir.
Make a motion.
Second.
Mr. Alloy?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, everybody. Good meeting.